The May version of the Washington Township Planning Commission. And we would ask everyone right off the bat here to, they would, please stand as we do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Now, it's time for our second item, which is roll call.
Mr. Sacco?
Hello.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Jasky? Ms. Jacobson? Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Chaplin?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Okay, very good. I want to congratulate all the planning commission members who appeared this evening, so that we have a quorum and we can do the business that is scheduled, which is quite a bit tonight, so I hope you brought some patience in watching us do our business. And if you're here tonight to contribute, we want to thank you for that, because that's something that all of us up here really appreciate. We need your involvement at all times. So, we got approval of agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of the last minutes.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Second?
Yes. Okay, we got a second for approval of minutes. Thank you, John, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, correspondence? Dana, anything?
No correspondence.
Nothing? Okay. All right, here's opportunity of someone here in the audience has a comment they'd like to make that's not related to anything that's on the agenda, so if you want to talk about the first American pope tonight, you can do that. If you want to talk about our victory in Europe in 1945 on May 8th, you can do that. Now, if you've got anything you'd like to say outside of these agenda items, you're welcome to hit that podium. Unless and until you want to wait until the matters that we call, you'll have a chance to talk to us then too. Okay, very good. Okay, all right. Public comment, new business. Now, here we go with the start of our agenda. And the first letter A is Forest Pond's public hearing tonight. It's a formal planned unit development, otherwise known as a PUD. The parcel number is number 240423327. It is a residential, single-family development pursuing 69 units. And its location is the northeast corner of 28 Mile Road and Jewel Road. Many of us have hit that intersection through the years, I'm sure. So, who do we have here this evening for Forest Pond's? We have a crew.
I'm Mike Magnoli, 59227 Van Dyke. I'm the owner of Michelangelo Construction, the developer builder, and I brought my son who's going to be taking the company over. Centino?
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, I'm Centino Magnoli. I'm 59227 Van Dyke. I'm the son of Michelangelo, and I'm going to be taking over the business soon.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. John Delisalem with Noack &amp; Fraus, 48680 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, is civil engineer.
Thank you, John.
I'm Angelina. I am John's coworker. He's my boss, and I'm also part of Noack &amp; Fraus.
All right, thank you, Angelina.
Ben Alloya, 48 South Main, Mount Clemens, Michigan. I'm legal counsel for Mr. Magnoli and here to assist.
All right, thank you, Ben. Okay, well, who wants to start off?
I'm happy to start us off here. And we're in receipt of the review letters by the planner and engineer, and appreciate the comments that we received. We have, based on the comments that we did receive, we were able to revise our plan, however minor those changes might have been, and we can present those to you tonight. There was also another piece of the application, you know, the other half of it, development impacts a little how we qualify for this PUD.
Sorry.
Yeah, things happen. It's all right. We do believe that, you know, the positive impacts of this development will definitely outweigh any negative. I think the best way to approach it would just be to address some of the comments that were made by planning and engineering, and we'll just go one by one.
You'll need to appreciate.
Yeah. Starting out with the planning comments, I know there was some question on the waivers, and they were diligent about us, you know, making sure that we were hitting all of the waivers that we needed to hit. And when we did Powell Ridge in the past, comparison was a little different. We did compare it to, you know, the master plan numbers versus the underlying zoning. So, we've made those adjustments and detailed every item within the list that would apply as a waiver versus the A1. PUD agreement, I can have Ben speak to that at the end, but the development impact statement that we issued, there were some comments regarding like the maps and things that were in there. One of them, obviously, the location map here, I've got it on the screen now, you know, the zoning map. I think everybody's familiar with this area, and then as well as the land use map, which did get submitted with this initially. One thing that we did not put was in the package was a formal traffic analysis. And the reason we did that, you know, and it comes with familiarity with this area, we designed this site to relieve Jewel Road, which sees the peaks from the school traffic. And with the nature of this development and the roads in this area, we decided to put our entrance on 28 Mile Road, which would be the lesser impact, so we can put our trips onto 28 Mile. And they can certainly assess whether Jewel Road was backed up for the school traffic during those two peak hours and continue to the west to either proceed south or north in Van Dyke to avoid that situation. We've also allowed under this design for the Powell Ridge traffic, which would have no choice right now but to go out onto Jewel Road and make a left turn that might be difficult. They would, after construction, have the ability to track through our site and onto 28 Mile Road without a problem. The other positive impact of this would be that we're taking some, we think we're going to take some school trips off the road by having the access from the walking bike path through our site into the school property to the north. The developers also open to contributing to the completion of a sidewalk along Jewel Road, which would help the kids to get to the school to and from as well. Developers done Forest Brook right just to the south of us, and they will benefit as well from this. We didn't think that the additional trips onto 28 Mile Road were going to create a negative situation. We are proposing a bypass lane, XL/DSL lanes, so there won't be any impedance of traffic due to people turning left into our site, so it still will flow. And as we know, it's not a signalized intersection, just because the counts don't warrant that. So, as you might be familiar, and we've looked at some traffic analyses that were done on other sites where we're near an intersection, or we need a signal, or we've got pedestrian crossings that, you know, we need to be concerned about, or, you know, if there's a drive-through on a site, or median crossover, site distance issues, there's none of that here. So, we spared ourselves of the 150-plus-page traffic analysis we're all used to leafing through and would ask that you not require it on this particular job. I will let Mr. Alloya also speak to the future master deed, which is in the works but not ready at this stage yet. Typically, we wait until we're farther along because there's easements involved, and usually at the engineering phase, we will provide that. It was requested by the planner. Lighting was added along the Boulevard, and I'll get into this too, so we can see the changes that were made to that plan. And we've added what is, you know, common, the double-headed light pole to our signage and in the Boulevard area on 28. We've also delineated the 25-foot buffers for the environmental areas. You can see that those were added on this plan as well. And we included the off-site pond, the two onsite ponds. And as a part of this change, we did pull back these walking paths just to keep them out of the 25-foot. We did intend for this to maybe be a, you know, a usable, even like a fishing-type pond, taking it from its irrigation status to, you know, a usable recreational area for the families. We did note in our waivers, once we resubmit this, you will see it, but we did add a waiver to the tree spacing between irrigation pond and Jewel Road. There's just not enough room to do what the standard would allow. And with the aerator that we're dropping in this pond, while there would be trees still proposed there, the spacing would allow some view in, and we weren't against that, seeing that irrigation pond so near the road. It's, we think it's actually a attractive element for anybody that's passing by. Phase lines were added, so this green line that divides the site into two. The phase to the left is the first phase, and then a second phase would complete the loop around to the east. Concerning the engineer's comments, I've already touched on the traffic analysis, and then some of the maps that we provided, including the location map, zoning map, those are all technical details. There were several other technical items that we appreciate are probably next level stuff, water main, you know, size, additional benchmarks, you know, adding proposed to the street names and other items, you know, related to the county road section. Those are all items that, you know, are technical in nature. We certainly will address now and in the engineering phase. But with that, I'll let Mr. Alloya speak to the agreements.
Thanks, John.
So, with your PUD process, the petitioner is asked to bring a proposed agreement forward. I know some communities have a form that they require. So, I did submit that along with the application. There was a couple of comments from planning which were minor in terms of more of a typographical things, which we're willing to change. I did have a conversation with Ms. Anderson before the hearing last week, and I said, you know, do you want to review the agreement? Are there any changes? And I understand, Ms. Anderson, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that your indication is we will review this after the hearing and go through it. So, we're prepared to do that, and if there's any questions or comments, it's fine, but the comments that were made by planning were easy to correct. I've actually redlined them already and ready for review with Ms. Anderson.
All right, thank you.
One more thing I wanted to add. My son and I, we made a presentation to the school superintendent, Dr. Robinson. He's in the work-based learning program at Romeo High School, so he works part of the day at school, and he comes out to work with us. And the superintendent loved the idea, more affordable homes, the walking path connected to the other suburb. So, this has been done with the superintendent, and he loves the fact of putting these homes over there.
Okay, very good. Never hurts to have the school backing you up, never. Okay, anybody else from Forest Pond's want to speak? Before our staff makes comment, that's the next phase in our process.
Well, my staff member here just reminded us about a comment that was made on one of the paths, so I figured I'd add that in before we turn it back to you. But there was a comment about connecting this path here to this detention base and maintenance road, and that road is out here on the east side. The slope on that is such that it wouldn't be ADA compliant if we connected to it, so we had a little turnaround there, and that way, the whole path is compliant for everybody.
Okay.
With that, I'll turn it back.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we usually start on this side of the dais with Dana, you have anything? Michael, any addition to what you've submitted in writing, which has been quite lengthy?
No, yeah, I think John addressed most of them, and most of them are minor plan revisions and other items. Obviously, the planning commission should determine if you feel that the traffic impact analysis is not necessary. That is your prerogative, but must be determined by this group. The rest of the items are really cleanup items. There was nothing major from a road layout or utility layout that really was an issue that couldn't be handled, and as noted with our last item there, that there is adequate water and sewer capacity for this development as it is proposed.
Okay, so we're infrastructure, water, sewer is fine.
Yep.
And Michael?
Yeah.
Okay, Kayla, you're next.
It sounds like from the applicant's statements that they are willing to revise to meet the notes that we had on our review letter. Just a reminder on that lighting fixture, it also needs to be dark sky compliant in addition to the double arms, so just make sure you're checking on that. And then a reminder to the planning commission that your obligation is to review the positive and negative impacts of the proposed PUD to determine if the development benefit substantially outweighs what would be developed under standard zoning. In addition, you'll make determinations on whether the proposed PUD meets the A special land use criteria specified in the zoning ordinance, and we included those at the top of your letter as well. So, be thinking about those things in addition to my connized comments.
All right, Kayla, thank you. Kristi?
Just to piggyback off what Kayla said with the A standards, you do have to go through each one of them and say how it satisfies it, how it does not. You don't have to restate the standard, but you do have to make a finding of fact as to whether or not the standard is satisfied and how it's satisfied.
Thank you, Consular. All right, before the planning commission starts asking questions, we have a public hearing in this matter, so let's entertain a motion for a public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing. Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, notice of public hearing, which was issued by our secretary, Ron Jasky, on April 23rd, duly published, and hereby given there be a public hearing. As you all know, that's why you are here, and the application is being made by Stonecrest of Washington, Michael Magnoli, aka Michelangelo Homes, 59227 Van Dyke, Washington, Michigan, 48094, parcel 240423327. Again, it's the 28 Mile northeast corner of 28 and Jewel. The legal description, please trust me, what's printed is good, otherwise, I'm going to put you to sleep. So, this is our chance for the public hearing in a matter where the purpose is to hear and receive comments, always. That's why we have these public hearings, and we publish notice, and we're glad you're here. So, if you have something to say about this development, you've heard the applicants make their presentation, feel free to come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us your story. Anybody. We do have somebody.
Okay, my name is Dennis Pondo. I live on 28 Mile Road, and the development is going to go back behind my house, and I want to know what's going to happen to the grade, the drainage. They already got the drainage from Marino Guys subdivision up ahead of that, and it's all coming down right next to the school property and the property that's going to be developed. And that all comes down to 28 Mile Road along with the water from 29 to come down to 28. Now, you got a, the elevation is 10 feet from 29 to 28. And right now, my driveway floods, the second driveway by my pole barn. So, I don't know, you're going to have more problems, the way I look at it. And then, three times already, everybody starts digging, and they hit all my tree roots and kill all my trees. The first one was the school. They decided they were going to put a road or something, or a parking lot next to me, so they killed all my oak trees, 12 of them. Then M1 come in, and he developed where he had to have that drainage ditch come by, and I got 30, 20 pine trees there. He took my ditch away, so all the water would go to their ditch, and now my pine trees are all dying. What's going to happen when you start developing? The grade's going to come up. I have a ditch in the back where my pond flows into. Now, I gotta wonder, what are you going to do? What are they going to do? All this has got to be conservation. I mean, they're going to come in, and they're going to develop that. I understand that, but they got to look for the people. There's a lot more things. They're going to dig these ponds. Already, when they dug the ponds in the other subdivision next to the school, already, they're going to build another couple ponds. Most of the wells around there are only down 50 feet, and the vein comes right through, right through that property. So, I'm wondering what's going to happen. Lot of the new wells they put in are 100 feet, but if you moved in in the 70s, they're only 50 feet. Put my glasses on. Oh, is there going to be sidewalks all the way down 28 to the school?
We'll ask them, we'll find out.
Well, the other thing is, for years since I moved there, the traffic on that road where the pavement is, is 35 or 40? 45? And when they hit the dirt road, it's 55, and they gun it, so they're doing 60 when I go by that little school warehouse. I think if you're going to do that, that road's going to have to be paved, that way, these people aren't going to be flying down these roads. They're like cowboys. When they go into that subdivision, oh, Cherry Creek, Autumn Creek, that's where it is. Yeah. They fly down like cowboys.
Seems to be the trend.
But the main thing is the water problem.
Yeah.
You know, it's a lot of water.
Yeah.
Lot of water.
Yeah, they know it, the wetlands and the basic.
Right. That school wanted to put a road through there, and they couldn't do it because there's so much water coming down through there. And that elevation is strictly the way it is. You probably know.
You want to come up to the podium?
You got pictures?
A walk's a little funny because they had D operations.
We can all empathize.
Now, what did I do with my pictures here?
Well, we could probably, if you can transfer them or email them, we do that.
Okay, I can do that.
Can you do that?
Do that.
Can I show you this one?
Sure. Come on up. Approach the bench, Dennis. We'll pass it around. And what am I looking at?
That's my second driveway.
That's your second driveway?
Flooded.
Where's the canoe?
Yeah. And you know what? Most of that is caused because that school has a too small of a culvert.
Hmm.
They got a three-inch culvert. Then you go down the road, and they got a, probably a four-foot culvert down there just past the power line. They're all big 36-inch or four-foot.
Thanks, Dennis.
All right. Thank you.
We thank you, and you're welcome. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm Bill Chef. I own the property on 61281 Jewel, and I just got some questions, and.
What was your name again?
Bill Chef.
Okay, Bill.
Okay. I want to know how the township feels about this big development going on there.
That's why we're here.
Okay, so what, I mean.
We don't know how we feel yet.
Right, okay, okay.
They certainly have a right to develop the property, though.
Yeah. How far back is that easement from Jewel Road and 28? How far back is that property going to be developed? I'm sorry?
John's going to answer that question.
Okay, how far will houses be built or the property, you know, from Jewel, from Jewel from 28? How far back? I mean, you know, right now, it just seems like there's too many, you know, 59, is it 59 units, you know?
69.
I'm sorry? 69? Okay. I mean, I don't know, I just think that's too many. Okay. Okay, so these seven are on the road, okay? Are there sidewalks on that, on Jewel Road and 28?
Proposed across our front, yes.
Okay, even in front of the pond there and everything? How far is that going to go?
The applicant's proposing to take it up to the school.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. Is there going to be any type of, besides walking paths, any bike paths or anything like that considered?
Okay. Hey, Bill?
Yes.
Ask the planning commission the questions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
John will answer them, but.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so there's going to be bike paths and.
Walking paths.
Walking paths, okay. How wide are they going to be?
I think they're required six or eight feet. Eight feet?
Eight feet, okay.
And then five on interior.
Okay, five on the interior, eight on the outer.
So, is this a good thing? Is this a good thing?
I've built two subdivisions, just full-size.
Yes, I know, I know. Okay. So, are people, are people, are people happy about this?
Well, that's why we're here.
Okay. And when are we going to get some answers, or, you know, when will that be?
It's hard to predict in due time.
Okay. So, you know, I don't have.
We will answer, though.
Okay. So, I don't have a problem with this being developed. I just think it's too much.
Too much in what way?
Too much, too many houses, too much traffic, too much of everything. I mean, you know, I went by, what, 27 and Van Dyke, and all of a sudden, I seen those big, 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 big residential apartments and condos there. I mean, you know, that was just a surprise to me, you know, it was just, Willie, you approve that?
Some planning commission years ago did. It wasn't this one.
Okay, okay.
But consent judgment.
When they go back to Vienna, it was like the 80s.
Which one are we referring to?
27.
27 and Van Dyke. Are we Kirkway?
Yeah.
That was 2001, but that was a consent judgment, so that the township actually denied the applicant's request, and then it went to court.
Okay, so, you know, I've owned property for over 60 years there, and, you know, I'm a little nothing there, you know, but I still care about what's going on and what's happening. And all I want is what is good for the community in Washington Township. I mean, I really like, you know, I've always loved Washington, okay? I don't want to see anything bad happen with it, and, you know, what else is the development given to the Washington Township? What are they going to? What are they gonna reduce our taxes, or are they gonna do anything special for us?
That's a good question, and that's part of the representation and the application, that a planned unit development will show benefits to the community. Of course, taxes are one. That's not the end-all, be-all. There are other things, such as building a residential to a school where people, where children can walk to school. That is something that's historically founded in this country throughout the nation, and that, to me, is an important aspect.
I think so, too.
That I value a lot, because I got to walk to school 60-plus years ago. And today, you're lucky if you get to walk to school, you're riding a bus, you're lucky you can walk up to where the bus picks you up. So this is an advantage for any family, in my opinion, for any family who wants to live in this township and have their children walk or ride a bike to school. This is a rare opportunity, and to me, it's the Americana way.
Okay, I'll go for that, you know, so...
And let me just add another thing. 54 years, well, 54 years is the anniversary, that's today, but 51, 273, 52 years we've lived here. And I feel the same way you feel about this township. Anybody sitting up here wants the best that can be for Washington Township. We can't control everything, we don't own the land, but we do have the authority of our ordinances to direct or mold or persuade whoever is coming into our township with property proposals to do things in a way where the people come here and talk to us, as yourself, can come away somewhat satisfied. Nothing's gonna be perfect.
Right. Okay, that's about it, I think...
You did good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else after Billy? I know the feeling.
My name is Martha Maher, and I live on 28 Mile. My question is, where are they going to put the entrance roads on 28 Mile to that new subdivision?
Okay. We'll let our applicant maybe give us a pointer up on the board. John, maybe you can answer Martha's question?
Here's the intersection right there.
Of 28 and Jewell.
Yeah, and we'll be right...
And what is this right here?
That's the entrance from 28.
Where's the warehouse, the school warehouse?
Way over here.
So where's the pond, then, that's right there?
There's a pond that's over here, to the east of us.
So the road will go here?
Yes.
So are the houses...
Closer to the intersection.
What, so it's supposed to be a brand-new road, then? What is right here, then?
These are four homes that are on that street.
Four homes, that'll be part of the development?
Yes.
Okay.
You okay, Martha?
No, I'm not, but...
Well, you got an answer, though, right?
Yes.
Good or bad, you got an answer.
I'm not here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I've been out here for many, many years, six, four, almost 50 years.
Okay, well, I beat you by a couple. Martha, I beat you by a couple. I beat you by a couple. Couple of years.
I still not have to respond.
Well, I understand. Yes, Bill?
Just one question. You know if they're gonna put a light and water...
That is something that we don't control, Bill. Macomb County Department of Roads will control that, and who knows? They're not an easy entity to approach, but if they hear enough about a light at an intersection, like, we could probably use one at 28 and Campground, and one at 28 and Mound, and I'm sure there's probably a half a dozen other suggestions in the township, so time will tell. But they'll get the message eventually, that that's a good question, that might make a difference.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else after Martha? You all set over there in the front row? All right, Dennis, ask away.
Well, I'm trying to figure out exactly where our house is at, on this back.
Okay.
Years ago, when I talked...
All right, Johnny, why don't you get up there to the board and help them out?
I talked to somebody, and they said that the retained pond is gonna be back behind us. So I'm picturing over there, that's our house. Okay. So, from the other community school buildings, right.
Okay, we got our laser.
Yeah. So, is there gonna be a drainage still behind there, like where I live? I mean, with that grade, they're gonna bring it all up?
They're not gonna bring anybody up, they're gonna bring it back. This would be an excavation downward, compared to what that water would normally be shooting from.
Yeah, that's gonna shoot into that green, which is no longer, you know, it'll be stored there for a period of time, and then it'll be slowly discharged through that direction. At times, we're experiencing a lot of water, if this comes all the way to the hatchet. Consider this the, that's how water is, so it is, but you should see... Now, what's this other thing? Is that like a walkway going around those things? Because I know the other one, they have, they got little park benches.
Some of the townships need to get in there.
So behind me, there ain't gonna be no house, the way over there. That's what I figured, that's the way it was. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Bill?
I didn't get an answer, how far that he's meant to be from Jewell.
You got a distance, John, that roughly?
Yeah, I can respond to it. There was a number of comments that were made, I can respond to those.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Yeah, with regard to, you know, concern of, I think the homes being near the roads, we're looking at a landscape berm and trees along the site perimeter. So everything along, at the rears of these lots, that would be near the corner, would be hidden from view, and quite a distance from the road. Only seven lots would really be touching any perimeter of the site. The rest would all be internal. We've got a number of preservation areas we didn't talk about tonight, we talked at length at the other night, when we did the conceptual plan, but this one is quite substantially preserving, 15% of the site.
How high are the roads?
3 foot.
Is that all?
3 foot, but they are planted, so the screen would be...
Planted wood grass or planted with trees?
Trees. Yeah, the township requires it.
Continuously, or...
Yes.
There'd be pine trees usually, right, John?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then we're leaving this natural feature here with that pond, we're gonna put an aerator in it, so it'll be a fountain effect, but there will still be trees along that perimeter as well.
Are there gonna be any curbs along the road? Curbs?
Curbs along the exterior road?
Yeah.
No, there'll be a sidewalk at our site perimeter. Yeah.
It's just gonna be flat?
It'll be flat, and then you'll see a berm with trees on it.
All right, thank you, Bill. Okay, thanks, John. Anybody else after Martha? Got a cleanup hitter? All right, here we go.
I'm Michelle Bowman, 11205, Spruce Court, Washington. I'm on Jewell between 27 and Van Dyke. If this has already been talked about, I apologize, but are these houses on slabs? Are they, is it an association? Are people mowing their own lawns? I mean, just, what is...
I believe there'll be basements, but we'll clarify that. I've yet to see anything on a slab in front of us in ages. Will it be a homeowners' association? If it's a condo association, they're probably gonna do the maintenance and the lawn cutting and whatever on the outside exterior. That'd be my guess, but we'll verify that.
So you're saying you don't know if it's a condo association, or how it's gonna be?
Oh, yeah. It probably is.
It is. Yep, it is.
It is. You all set, Michelle?
I think so.
Okay, very good.
Plus, I think something else...
All right, you'll be welcome to say it. Ben, did you have something you wanna add, or is Mike?
Do you still have those allegations? The subdivision will be mimicking Forest Brook. I built Forest Brook about four years ago, they're all on basements, so there's gonna be an association fee. You know, to give you guys a comfort level, I live here also in Washington, I've been here for 21 years, raised my four kids here, they all go to the schools, I have a couple of buildings here, and I'm currently building Seven Lakes, the 100 acres there. So you want a great product. I live here also, my kids go to the school, so it's not like I live in Novi and I'm making a dollar over here. I live here, and I drive these corners every single day. So this'll be a Forest Brook subdivision, which is just, I did the one right across the street, so we're gonna have all the amenities and then some. I believe the association fee that I had then was $500 a year, so let's just say it's $700 a year. But they will not be maintaining the grass, everybody will cut their own grass, the association fee will take care of the common areas, the berms, the trees, the things that you don't own, but they're part of the association, that fee will take care of those areas.
I'm sorry, what is the cost?
We don't know, but it was $500 across the street four years ago, so let's just say it's 700. I own Seven Lakes right now, and I have acre lots, and we charge $1,000 a year for those big lots, so I'm trying to figure approximately 700 a year.
I mean, the cost of all?
All the homes itself, they're gonna probably be 700, 800,000. Bill, did I answer all your questions?
No, I think that, ever since I've seen you start building up the homes, who can afford $700,000?
Let me tell ya. I just built a $3 million spec home in Seven Lakes. My son helped me build this home, sold to the first person who walked in the door. So, these homes, there's a lot of demand for Washington Township, but they want, you want your money's worth, you want all brick, stone. We put all the landscaping in our homes, we put all the appliances. Normally, when you buy a home, you just get a home, and after you close, you gotta come out of pocket to pay for your appliances, pay for your landscaping, it's tough. I put everything in, it's turnkey, there's no issues, they can finance all their appliances, you know, five bucks a month, whatever comes out to once you do that, so it's a turnkey product. We make sure that the homes are built within the setbacks. I had 42 homes in Seven Lakes, or in Forest Brook, nobody came to the ZBA, they wanna put a deck, this didn't fit, I give you everything. And even in this $3 million spec at Seven Lakes, it had all the landscaping, all the appliances, turnkey, and they were able to finance it, 'cause it's there. Otherwise, you gotta cash me out, and then you have to come out of pocket for the balance, and it's tough. You know, landscaping was 150,000 on that house. It's tough to put your 20% down, borrow, and then do it again. So these homes that'll be here will have that same concept, fully landscaped, all the appliances, and then we'll sell them. It's a lot less headache for the homeowner, for the township, and for me. You like it, buy it, if not, there's other developments out there. Yes?
You were talking about the home being 700, 800,000 dollars, and you were talking about children walking to school. I wanna know how many people who can afford 700, 800,000 dollar home are gonna have young children walking to school?
How many?
Yes.
Well, we'll wait and see, as the development is built. If you look just a couple, maybe a quarter of a mile down Van Dyke here, Autumn Creek, was built, filled up in maybe a little over a year, a couple hundred homes. Little over a year, Phil. People wanna live in the township, and if they have the money to spend, like Mike explained, it's not just getting in at the base price. There's a lot more that goes on to it, and if we build it out here, they will come. And they do. They wanna live in Washington Township. You live in a great community. And I can tell you, a quality community, like Mike talked about, no one coming to our zoning board for variance requests, because we've been sued and we lost out here at the township, and the houses are right on top of each other, and people can't build a deck, they can't do anything, but we were forced to accept that. What he built did not produce any of that, and that's a great thing for all of us, especially the people who move in and pay all that money.
I will ask you...
Yes?
I will, I wanna say one thought at a time. They got subdivision, they just put in a corner, 20, and they work that's for...
Forest Brook.
That is the most beautiful subdivision. I had to say something positive.
Thank you very much.
Dennis and I drive through there all the time, and we look at the landscape.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's giving us ideas.
There you go. Okay.
Our main concern is, we don't want it flooded out.
Right.
We don't want our trees that, we worked very hard to plant and shape for.
Yeah.
This man worked two jobs for a while, so did I.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, that's all we want. We just want it, we just want it, we're not flooded out, our trees aren't dying, you know.
I hear you, Martha. No, you have a good concern. That area in the township, and a number of areas in the township, there are wetlands, there are basins, there are drains, and we take careful, careful attention, as our civil engineer does, and so that the developers, to making sure that that water is not directed towards any current residential. I mean, they do painstaking work to do that in engineering. Michael, can you, is there anything you're over, Rodder, excited about with this development, where the folks are concerned with the drain, the basin, whatever, the wetlands?
No, I mean, I think John touched on it a little bit earlier, that when these sites get developed, a large pond is installed that acts as a time release of that runoff water that is created, and it releases it at a rate no greater than what it would be if it was still a farm field. When the site to the north was developed, there were improvements that were made through the back of this property to provide an outlet for that one, because as originally proposed, there was not a clear way for that water to get to 28 Mile Road. Certainly, if there's flooding issues, and I think the residents expressed that, if there's flooding issues related to the ditching that's on 28 Mile Road, it's a separate issue that they should come in and talk to the township about, we can help to mitigate that with the Department of Roads. But this site is responsible for their own drainage, they will keep their water on their site, they will release it from their site at a controlled rate and not make any situation downstream any worse than it is today.
And how long, Michael, have you been township's civil engineer?
Since, a civil engineer?
Well, what you want...
We've been the township engineer here since 2009, so some of these sites that everyone say are terrible predate us, we had nothing to do with that.
Okay.
But, no, I mean, you know, that's always the goal, that's the result, too. And if there's an issue where that isn't functioning correctly, we work with the development team, we work with subdivisions that have been in place for 25 years to go back and see what's wrong with their pond and why it's not functioning correctly.
I'd say 16 years, you got quite familiar with Washington Township.
That's correct.
Anything else, folks, on the record? Yeah, Bill?
Do your property taxes go up with the property values going up?
Well, I can't speak for the taxes, but the values aren't gonna go, obviously...
He's not our assessor.
These homes that we did Forest Brook, four years ago, we were selling 600, 700,000. Nothing's ever been for sale, the first one, just one for sale for a million and a quarter. So, and these, all this landscaping that you see, we install all the landscaping, we do them all, so they want this one customer from 600, 700, to a million and a quarter, so it's gonna go up, but I can't control taxes.
No, and you don't, and no one does. It's usually SEV, state, equalized valuation, that's where it starts, but I can tell you with Proposal A, you buy a house out here, someone's lived in, the longer, the more the years they've lived in it, the more your taxes are gonna be when it's uncapped, and that's something that we have to live with with Proposal A. So whoever bought that house for a million and a quarter, their property taxes were significantly more than the person who sold it, and that's just a fact of life. The longer you live in your home, the more you benefit with Proposal A. Later you buy that house from someone who's lived there so long, the more the uncapped taxes are going to be, just, we have no control over that. So, we see them every year in March when they appeal their taxes, and we feel so...
We feel sorry for the uncapped ones, but there's nothing we can do with uncapped. That's just the law. But anyway, yeah, that's the way it is. And yeah, the property taxes can be steep, but I'm not an expert on it either. So that's all I could say about that now. Okay, anybody else after Michelle? All right. So it looks like, if you've got anything you want to add, you know, you can come back after. That's hard to tell. That's something for the planning commissioners to vote on, Bill. Dennis? Yeah. Well. They ignore us too. Don't feel like the Lone Ranger. It's, they're very busy. Lot of roads, lot of traffic in Macomb County. And we're the far northwest here and, you know, it's like we're out in the interland sometimes. Okay. Well, I'm not aware of that one and I don't know if our applicant is. No, they're not. Well, it's something they're going to look forward to. That's all I can say on that one, Dennis.
I just want to say, I know that we have to meet the eight standards of the special land use. And we made a presentation. I think we've touched on all of those. I don't know if the board wants us to go through each one of these and comment on them one by one.
Well, after the public hearing. I don't think you need to do it now.
Okay, thank you.
After the public hearing. Anybody have anything else? You can say it after we close the public hearing if you want. We're not going to let anybody walk out of here without making comments. Because otherwise we'd like to close the public hearing. And the commissioners want to ask questions. They're chomping at the bit over here. Yes, ma'am? Yes. Yes, yeah. Okay, all right, very good. Yeah, no, it's the public hearing on this matter. Okay. Yeah. Dennis, you're wearing me out, man. I know you are. So are we.
Those roots are all on the knee there. That's why my, that's why those trees died. They didn't use my ditch because they didn't want to move the telephone pole and wind it. So they bought property from that school and they diverted it around. And then they closed mine, dry water off. And then they hit the roots.
We got another photo. All right. That's why. Hey, that's why you're here.
Yeah. They're all dying because they, my drainage ditch, which was same one autos put in years ago, apartment, then it came down. It's, Spring Stewie lived there.
Supposed to be water? Uh, no, this is ditches that cause trees to die. Okay, oh, the dead trees, okay.
Yeah, what happened was they put a new ditch in because they had to bring all the water down. So they killed my ditch. But when they dug that ditch, 25 feet over, they hit all my trees.
Killed them, yeah.
And the school did the same thing.
Ah, that's a shame. Hate to see trees die. John, you got any, do you have a response to that?
Well, I can assure him that it's not the intent of this development to go re-excavate or expand the ditch next to your property. We don't intend to do that. Sorry.
They dug it out, just, they just dug that ditch maybe my four years ago and it's all fraying, it's all grown up already. Good thing I, my subcon goes to the, my pond. But when it went to the back ditch, after about eight years, the ditch grew back up. It's like they dig out the front ditch, you know?
Yeah, well, we can look into, you know, a clean out on that.
Okay.
But there is no intention to deliver more water there or to excavate next to your home, so.
Liar.
That you would have to negotiate with Powell Ridge.
Guaranteed, I will replace it. I'm on TV here. It's guaranteed.
Yeah, we don't intend to excavate near you.
If I kill your trees, you've got some. All right, folks, let's get back to order.
All right.
All right? Okay, we're back to order. Okay, I think I'll take a motion to close our public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Hold on. Bill, you'll have a chance to make more comments, but we do need to move along.
Boy, you have such authority.
I know. Support for your motion, by the way.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Motion by Pete, supportive.
Yeah.
Okay, I made a motion.
40 feet minimum to the property line.
All right, Bill? All right, we had a motion. We had a second. All in favor? Aye. All right, our public hearing is closed on this matter of forest ponds. Planning commissioners, questions? Anybody up for a question? In regards to the traffic study, we've had quite a few traffic studies in that jewel. Is it necessary for the commission to ask for a traffic study?
You can waive the requirement, but you need to say why you're waiving it.
Well, would one of the reasons be for what I just said? If there's been enough traffic studies done on Jewel and that should be sufficient?
Yes.
So then I can make a motion to waive the traffic study?
Go ahead, Kayla.
Yeah, you can. Okay, Kayla, go ahead. I'm sorry.
You can do it either separate or I would recommend waiting and doing it at the time you either approve or deny.
Okay.
Yeah, do it all at once is a good suggestion. Thank you, council. Thank you. Okay, very good. I have a question. John, how many car garages are these homes?
Confirm that they're all three-car.
Yeah.
Side entry.
Three-car side entrance. You took the weight off my shoulders because I read something somewhere unless I misread it without my glasses. It was going to be two cars and I thought, oh my goodness, we're going back to the 90s. You know, that's, okay, very good. Thank you, thank you.
So I'm going to jump in since Barry Miller can't be here tonight. I'm going to channel the spirit of Barry Miller and say it's overly dense because that's what Barry would say. I'm looking at the underlying zoning. I'm looking at the proposed uses and, and I love your homes. They're, you know, they're beautiful work. I don't love this subdivision. I've been looking at it and trying to reconcile the density, trying to reconcile the land use. And I'm even having a little bit of trouble getting to the point where this qualifies in my mind for a PUD submission. I mean, when we look at the PUD ordinance, we're talking about, you know, as it states, innovative land use and design. Again, beautiful homes, but this is a fairly simple subdivision. You've got two existing ponds. You're putting in houses and you're going to put in a path next to each pond. And I'm, in my head, I'm wondering why this isn't just a standard site plan? What is it about this that raises it to the level of a PUD? What are the advantages? What's the innovation in design and layout that gives it that extra that it qualifies for a PUD submission?
Is that it, John?
I mean, on that question, sure. So.
All right.
But again, like I said, I'm looking at the, and I'm looking at the density too. I mean, this is an A1 right now. You're looking for an R1B. I know that our master plan is anticipating an R1A. So a 30,000 square foot lot. I know there are other developments in the area that are in process complying with that 30,000 square foot number. And if I'm looking at a compromise solution between an R1A and an R1B or an R1B and an A1, you know, right in the middle lands me at R1A.
Well, how many lots do you think would make it undense?
Um, I, you know, I think you should be able to develop whatever you can develop under the, under the proposed future use, R1A. Kayla, I know you had done some calculations in here and.
So the applicant provided a yield plan analysis. It looks like they have it up on the screen. That might be the easiest to reference. And that compares what's presented in the future land use map, which is just, you know, a guiding document. That's not the legal framework. It compares that with what they're offering and what the existing zoning is as well.
So.
Are you looking at master plan density at the top there, John? 61 units?
No, I've looked, well, if you look at the minimum yield of 43 and then the maximum yield of 61, I think there's a, you know, I think there's a number in there that works somewhere. Again, I'm not, I haven't, I haven't worked out all the details of the math on how many lots you can fit on X acres with so much open space. But just looking at the numbers that we have now, it does seem a little overly dense for the zoning.
Remember, it's a PUD and we're weighing benefits versus the downside.
And that's, that was my other point. I'm looking for the benefit. And I'm, you know, in my opinion, I'm doing the benefit analysis and I'm trying to come up with where it fits into the PUD and what is the overall benefit. I know that there's been a lot of things that have been talked about. But when I look at the subdivision itself, you know, I, for the type of home that you build, for the amount that you're charging for these, I would expect more amenities, I think, in the neighborhood. And I know you do, you do great work on the homes. They're all over the, they're all over the neighborhood. But again, you know, I grew up, I grew up down in Warren. I've seen this, I've seen this neighborhood where I grew up. It's that Loop Street and I look at some of the, you know, the things that we're looking for in future development. I look at some of the other areas around, you know, Metro Detroit and some of the, you know, some of the designs I'm seeing in innovation and neighborhood design. And I would like to see some of that brought to Washington Township. No knock on, again, your building quality, but this design does not, does not sit well with me for a PUD submission.
Okay, John? Well, John, we're only adding a few lots, like every development that we do, that everybody does. It's all financial to make sure that, you know, we have enough to make that wheel spin. What we came in originally at pre-planning, we had another street. We put fewer lots, but we had to put another street and take out that irrigation pond that was created for the old sod farm. And when we spoke about it, we thought this would be a great amenity to leave for the kids. They go fishing. We put paths and benches. So we left that, but we had to add a few lots to make up the financial difference that we lost. I can fill the pond in. It's an irrigation pond. But I think it's a nice feature to have for these kids in the neighborhood to go fishing. We've extended the sidewalks, walking pass-through. I'm going to spend out of my pocket. We're connecting to the school on Jewel. We're spending a lot more in sidewalks than what's required. But the amenities, it's a small piece. There's not much I can do. I can't put acre lots in there. I mean, you know, or bigger lots. To make this thing work, that's the number that we have. And we saw it pre-planning. We took that court out, that street. We thought it was great for the kids to play. Nice little pond. Yeah, we were up to 75. We took lots out.
Yeah. And I appreciate your position on that. And, you know, unfortunately from where I sit, the, all the financial stuff, I can't consider.
Sure.
You know, when it comes to the township. I think Bill made a comment earlier about he's just a little nothing in the township. And I wanted to make one comment on that. Bill, you're not. You're a homeowner in Washington Township and you get as much consideration as anybody else. And that's part of what we do up here is we, you know, we have to balance all of that. You know, again, my opinion when I look at this is that there's just too many units in the subdivision for the size of the parcel, you know, one man's opinion. I would like to see it back down a little bit to get a little closer to the, the future planned zoning, the A1, which is consistent with the surrounding district. So.
Which surrounding district?
Well, you know, the other lots around here that are, that are zone A1.
Okay.
You know, and again, it would be consistent with our future land use. So that's where I sit on it. Just wanted to, I wanted to put that out there.
Okay. All right, well, I'll look through this window and I will say the more homes that are there on this development, the more kids are going to get to walk or ride their bike to school. I'm going to look at it that way.
Assuming families with children buy.
You can believe there will be. Yes, John?
Just to add to that, there are some unique characteristics of this site. And having done many of these sites in Macomb County and within Washington Township, it's rare that you have a usable recreational space with a pond that can actually be used recreationally. In Powell Ridge, it's a detention basin. You know, you're not going to put anything on it. You're not going to float it. You're not going to fish in it. Whereas this site has exactly that. And the kids can walk through that pond and recreate as we all used to. I wouldn't suggest that it's not an advantage to be in a walkable distance to a ninth through 12th grade school. I think Romeo Community Schools is sought after and these lots adjacent to that site would be in high demand. I don't think it's too many lots. Like the applicant said, we did show additional lots, but we opted for the preservation and went the PUD route. And he's also offering off-site improvements to provide a public benefit. All of these lots in here too, you know, with the exception of the central area, are not abutting another lot. It's not, I grew up in Warren as well. It's not that situation. There's many lots that abut a recreational space or even recreational space on the other side of the property line. Quite a bit of preservation area. I think it's a value. I think it's a little bit unique too.
Okay, thank you, John. Anyone else? Peter, do you got anything?
Let me just ask one question though. On the, on the open space area on this, is the, is the pond area included in the open space calculation? Or is that separate? I just wanted to make sure we're.
No, it's separated. In the way the ordinance reads, the pond area actually has to be excluded from the developable land. So yes, not incorporated into that calculation.
So we're meeting the number without including the pond area?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that that was the case.
Yep.
Yeah, and the applicant has indicated too, as we discussed in the conceptual PUD level, we arrived at this size lot, not as large as the Powell Ridge, yet larger than Forest Brook. And that's from a market standpoint. And we got to see how the absorption went, what the demand was. And we feel we're right in that, that right-sized unit. Not pushing into these preservation areas, but just, you know, double loading each of the streets as everyone would expect.
I think Mike had brought up at pre-planning that learning from Forest Brook, the lots weren't as wide as they might have been. And you widened these lots, right, Mike? You've got an average of 90 feet lot, a lot. Forest Brook were 80s and they were tough. I mean, we're, our concrete's to the inch. Powell Ridge is too big at 100. Mm-hmm. These are right in between, it's the parcel between, they're 90 footers. This is what this product should be. We've changed our designs. I mean, it'll be a lot easier for us to get those three-car garage, make that turn-in. 10 feet is huge. So Forest Brook was tight. And if I didn't do all those jobs and left them to the homeowners do their landscaping, it would have, there would have been a lot of headaches here trying to get through ZBA. We made them all fit. 80s too small. I need 90s. 90s too expensive. 90s. And how big are their homes? How many squares? It'll be 2,800, 3,500, you know. They're, they're not 9,000 like we have, you know, over in. They're not empty nester homes? Uh, no. So, you know, 700, 800,000 is going to get you average 3,000 square feet. That's the going rate now, huh? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, very good. All right. Dr. Hall, do you have anything?
No, I don't. Very much answered all the questions.
All right, staff, anything else before we entertain any kind of motion here? Yeah, go ahead, Kayla.
I actually do have just a quick question on that pond that you're, you're talking about the fishing. Are there fish in that currently? Are you looking to stock it?
Yeah, the irrigation pond that's there, the owner had always speculated on doing that. So we were going to move forward and.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful context. Okay.
All right, John, do you have anything? One last thing?
I've always got one last thing.
That's why I asked.
Really want to keep this going?
That's, no, no, we, thorough.
I could do this all night.
We're thorough, John.
We're thorough, John.
No. No, I just noted, there, there are a lot of changes that were made on the, on the plan that you guys got, so we'll need to see that final plan then.
Mm-hmm.
So we're looking to, to table until that is presented.
I think that's a good suggestion, John.
Okay.
Very good.
So I won't make the motion yet in case anybody else has any comments, but.
Okay.
Gentlemen.
Yes, Mike.
Ladies, we are on a tight time constraint with the sellers and we would like to request a, a vote this evening. I know it's protocol to extend it another month, but if it, if we could get a vote, whatever it comes out to be, it comes out to be, because we have to, we, we, we're not in possession of the property, but we have to close and we need to have some direction. So, you know, anything that needs to be captured, let's just say it's, it's a, whatever detail it is, it could be subject to that. You would never approve it with that, hey, Mr. Kozak won't let me get away with anything. So it will be covered, but if we can get a vote, subject to whatever concerns you may have.
Yeah. Mike, I, I, we understand that. We appreciate your need. But there's only four of us here tonight. We apologize for that. We feel there are some issues here that we should have at least seven of our planning commissions, members here, the full planning commission. And that would require that we postpone this till the next planning commission date. To give you the opportunity to do whatever you feel to sharpen your pencil and do what needs to be done, gosh, we hope it doesn't interrupt the sale of, of the property, but we, we have to give this a thorough review. And that's why I believe we need, and, and that's probably what the vote's gonna be, Michael, is that all seven of us be here. And that's one of the big reasons for the postponement. We don't deny you wouldn't complete and do whatever, but there's only four of us here and we need all of us here. That's the way we feel.
Could we ask for a special meeting request? I mean, to go another month, this won't work. So is there a way we can get a special, special meetings?
You mean a meeting before the, a month?
Yes. That's fine.
I don't know, Dana, what's the schedule?
Then what would the cost on that be?
It, the cost is everyone's time, along with the review time, along with availability. And I don't even know if I can.
Manage it.
Get a quorum. It, it might buy, you know, a week and a half prior, but, I mean, it, it would be a challenge to do that. It's not something I could answer right now if that's feasible without reaching out to the rest of the board members.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll make it work.
Well, the problem is we, we got three members, at least that we can't, we can't say can make it work, so.
Yeah.
We can't promise a, a, a meeting that we haven't talked to everybody about.
Yeah. And here's the other thing, everything that, you know, obviously all the revisions that were presented also have to be reviewed. So there has to be enough time for there to be, you know, our consultants to review everything to be prepared for that meeting also. That's, you know, that's taking a, a typical month process and cutting it in half on top of having other applications coming in for the next meeting. So I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to be discouraging. I just, I mean, that's, that's a lot to ask of also.
Well, you know the logistics, D, and.
I can reach out, but I can't promise that we would be able to accommodate a date that would work for more than just a quorum, if that's the intent of.
Well, we could still make a motion to postpone with the possibility of a, a date sooner.
Well, we could, we could table it until next month's meeting, but again, yeah, we could try and do something sooner, but I don't, I don't think that that's, you know, that would be a, a maybe at best.
And remember, your standard course is to have a public hearing, close a public hearing, and then.
You know what?
Table it, not vote on till the next month to give you time to digest the public comments.
You're right.
So whether or not you've got four here or seven, that's your standard course.
You're right.
If you're going to vary from that standard course, you need to make a motion and explain why.
Yeah, we're in a tough spot, Michael. Santino, we're in a tough spot. We'd love to make a decision, but it wouldn't be fair to the full planning commission. It wouldn't be fair to the public. We do have to, and this is, council says, that's our protocol. We usually postpone a matter that's officially been presented to us at public hearing till the next month to get things, you know, wrapped up. We want to make sure that there's no question. And if there is a question or two when we make a final vote, it's not a big deal that it's gonna be done. So, and that's the best we can do as a postponement. And that's all I got to say.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right.
Wait, there needs to be a motion.
Yeah, Dana?
Oh, yeah.
What's the date of the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because even unless you feel there's two other members.
June 12th.
Oh, no, 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 no.
All right. Motion to, to table this item till the June 12th meeting.
Okay. Support from Dr. Hall. All right, we'll take roll call on that, D3.
Mr. Chaplin?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna be back here next month and finalize our matter and forest ponds. All the best. All right. Okay, next on our agenda, it's the Kayla Malden Show. And she, she's ready to.
Sign ordinance.
To give us, uh, yeah, she's ready to give us a, a whole bunch of stuff about sign ordinance, so. You know, if I may. Go ahead, Peter. Can, can we maybe push the sign discussion down and get these other applicants? I mean, the sign's gonna take a minute, isn't it?
Well, the reason it's up is because of public hearing. Maybe you wanna open the public hearing, let the comment, let the public talk, close the public hearing and then vote on it, you know.
On the sign?
Yeah, you could do that.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield to, to the chair.
You can take a second and ask if anybody's here for the sign.
Yeah, that's good.
But I'm sure all these folks want us to figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna let them know that they can take their conversations out.
Okay. Oh, folks, we're grateful you were here and caucus please in the hallway as we start our sign ordinance amendments. And we hope some of you are, are here for the sign amendments. But Kayla's gonna give us an overview and we're gonna listen intently.
If nobody's here, then move it down the agenda.
All right. Judge Christine wants to know if there's anybody here for the sign ordinance. No one? All right, we can move it down. So you won't have to suffer through our sign ordinance language and, uh.
Wow, wow, Chair Sacco.
It is unfortunate, because it's an exciting discussion.
It's quite riveting, yes.
All right, I get a second on that motion to move it down?
Second, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we'll move it sign ordinance down.
Palm View Estates.
Uh, Palm View's our next scheduled presenter and who have we got from, from Palm View to tell us their story? We do have someone.
Hello.
Hello, hello.
My name is Wes Yun and I'm one of the owners of SWH.
Okay.
And we're here today just to extend the project for one more year.
Okay.
Possible.
Yes.
And, yeah, we just, you know, we need more time to address the wetland, which we got an email from Eagle.
Yeah, that seems to be the issue.
Yes. So we're looking into a company that will give us some sort of a consultant or some sort of a study that we can submit.
Okay.
So that's one of them. We already submitted the plan to the road commission.
Yes.
They gave us their reviews, I believe, and we're, we're just addressing those. We're also working with the drain office.
Did you introduce themselves, though?
He did. That was a public hearing in the last matter, and we get a little more detailed, but this has already gone to public hearing. These folks are asking for an extension of what they had priorly, prior, not approval, but presentation.
Exactly.
They let it expire. Okay.
It hasn't expired.
Oh, it hasn't expired?
No, they just, they're asking for an extension to, on their preliminary condo that received approval so that they can work through the issues with Eagle and, and other things, so that it doesn't expire and they don't have to start from the beginning.
This is easy, right? We can just make a motion to allow the, you know, them to postpone.
Extend.
Extend. Extend, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion for the applicant, for Palm View Estates, to.
Is there public comment?
No. Comment?
I do.
Okay, well, yeah, there'll be, if you wanna, you have something to say, you're welcome.
You guys have the spot.
Yeah, yeah.
David.
David, yeah.
I live at eight, six, seven, eight Pioneer Street in Washington.
All right.
How long were they originally given?
Uh, the ordinance allows for two years.
So we've already had two years and we're asking for a third.
Um, the max is three from the date of approval.
Okay.
So we're not really giving them a third. They don't, they're trying to avoid expiration.
I, I understand. My issue is this. Repeatedly, it is, we get started and then these things drag on and on and on, and everybody's going for the extension and they always are gonna get it. So then the original timelines were crap and were not held to anything. My point is, there's, there are consequences to your actions.
Yeah.
The fact that there's a wetland there is not a surprise to anyone. The fact that they haven't dealt with it in the first two years is unfortunate and there should be consequences. So I'm not saying don't give them another year, but I'm saying that's, the standard default is, yep, you know, let's kick the can down the road and let's see in a year when I'm here, when he comes back and says, oh, by the way, can we have another year? At some point, we have to say, I'm sorry, start this thing over.
There is a limit. There is a limit. They've got one more year. But let's also understand that this is, Eagle is state and that's state authority and we can't override that. And sometimes the state is kinda slow, they might be behind. These folks may have tried to get Eagle in there, they can explain this, but now they've got one more year to get Eagle in there and, and give us, you know, whatever we need as far as this wetland issue for us to make a decision. And, you know, David, we're, we're gonna be on that, so. Appreciate your reminding us.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to allow a one-year extension for the Palm View Estate applicants.
Okay. All right, we'll take a roll call there, D3.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Chaplin?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Sacco?
Yes. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
You got your year.
Appreciate it.
Get that Eagle on the case.
Yes, sir.
All right, David raises a good point. Okay, we've got our next order of business. And that would be Washington Villas. And who do we have here for Washington Villas? This is a site plan review for multifamily residential. Prior approval expired. Parcel twenty-four, zero, four, thirty-four, two-hundred, zero, zero, three. Okay. Resubmitted. Inspired plans. Okay. Who do we have here for?
Hello, Planning Commission, my name is Jason Emmerich and I was Seber Keast Engineering, the design engineer on this project.
Okay, Jason, thank you.
My address is seventeen, zero, zero, one, Nineteen Mile Road, Suite Three, Clinton Township, Michigan, four, eight, zero, three, eight. I'm joined tonight by the applicant, Mr. Sam DiMecchio from Golden Homes, and also Mr. Josh King from my office, who helped me out with the engineering on this project.
Okay.
Are you ready for me to keep going?
You are on a roll, let's hear it.
Okay, all right. So the site plan, as you mentioned, was previously approved. It was approved by this body on December eighth, twenty-twenty-two. So it's been about two and a half years since it was last approved. As you mentioned, the site plan has expired. And the planning review letter by Spalding Decker, I'd like to, to note that Spalding Decker acknowledged that the site plan was approved. There were some comments back in December eighth, twenty-twenty-two. All of those plan, planning comments have been addressed and resubmitted to, to be acceptable. We're here tonight to ask for reapproval. Nothing on this plan has changed since two thousand two, or two thousand twenty-two. It's exactly the same plan. The only difference and the reason why we're back asking for renewal is because this development is waiting on utilities from the project to the south. This project cannot go until the project to the south is developed. It's my understanding that that project is moving forward. They're pushing forward for permits. Once the utilities are available from the project to the south, that includes storm water, wa, water and sand sewer, our applicant is ready to go.
Okay, very good.
So we're here tonight to ask for reapproval, if you will. We hope we do not have to come back again and talk about it again. Our applicant is ready to go as soon as those utilities are available.
Okay.
And with that, I'm here to answer any questions. Also, the applicant is here.
All right.
To answer any questions.
Okay, very good.
And I also have the plan up here. Let me close some of this.
That's good. Good idea.
Zoom in if anyone would like to see it. Uh, this, uh, site plan is on Twenty-Seven Mile Road, just west of Jewel. It's just west of the fire station. If everyone's familiar, the fire station is on Twenty-Seven Mile Road. This is just west of the fire station.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm gonna ask the staff. Staff, any questions? Dana, Mike?
I'll turn to Mike and Kayla.
Mine'll be very quick. As, as Jason indicated, the reason why this site plan hasn't been built yet, to talk to our last item that we had before, is it was always known that the outlets for these utilities, public sewer, public water main and private storm sewer, all have to run through the Vernon Grove site, which is a part of the Clifton Corners PUD to the south and to the east. As he indicated, that project is in engineering review and nearly, knock on wood, very close to approval. They have all their permits they have to get, but they are very much moving in earnest to, to get to construction.
So they could not move forward because of the, the delay and, and the utilities coming north?
Correct. So, you know, and it's smart and a, a good way to develop, right? We don't put a lot of like parallel utility, major utility lines next to each other. We wanna have them go through the same pipe, in very simplistic terms, right? So that is the case. They, you know, that site was much larger. It takes a little longer to move through their process. Uh, but they are doing that and the site can connect. So our only comment in our letter was just a couple of those locations have changed very slightly of where those connection points will be. So we would just want that memorialized on this site plan so that it's clear and correct. We can provide that information to the applicant. It's quite easy.
Michael, we're talking about Washington Township infrastructure that was not completed.
Has not been built because the development hasn't happened. It's not that someone didn't do what they're supposed to do. It just hasn't gotten to that point yet. They're, they're moving along through that process.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you.
I will defer to Kayla for her comments.
Okay.
Um, and as, as was stated, this was approved prior, um, but because the site plan expired, we had to, they had to resubmit and we had to go back through the full review process. There were a few things we caught on our end, uh, which are listed in your review letter. None of these are insurmountable. One is just that the front elevation that they show on their plans isn't quite at that ninety percent brick. So that's something that we wanted to discuss with the applicant. Um, they're also, we're slightly deficient on the recreational area by about six hundred square feet. But there's space on the site to potentially accommodate that, um, on the, the northeast portion of the site, especially where there's some lawn area that hasn't been programmed. So again, I think that's something that the Planning Commission could work with the applicant on. And then we wanted to have the site plans revised to show the eight-foot wide pathway along Twenty-Seven Mile Road as concrete instead of asphalt. That's just, you know, something that wasn't, wasn't caught prior, um, but we've been starting to catch on other developments that have come through.
We changed it actually.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it used to be either or, and now we've said it's got to be concrete. So that was.
Perfect. Thanks. Um, and then the last thing was just the, the lighting fixtures. We wanted to ensure that those are shielded downward and are designated as a dark sky friendly light, consistent with your ordinance. There was a note in here about the dimensions for ninety-degree parking spaces. You know, I've, I've talked to staff and, and with Mike about how the township has looked at this in the past. And when you have parking spaces that are in that driveway apron, we haven't used that dimensional standard. So at this time, that's not something that they're out of compliance with. It's just something we noted on our review letter.
Is there a reason we haven't used that standard based on?
Typically, a two-car garage is about twenty feet wide. The, the door, well, excuse me, the garage itself is about twenty feet wide. The door wide, door opening is not that wide. So people just don't put twenty-foot wide driveways in front of these, these units. That, that isn't that much different even from single-family houses. We see the same thing where a lot of times that driveway next back down to a narrower.
We don't have a minimum width in, in any of our residential districts for driveways.
And, and the ninety percent brick is, uh, has to be bad.
Yeah, and it, it affects the front elevation only. On all the other elevations they're showing, they're, they're meeting that ninety percent brick.
Yeah.
Just the front side portion.
So, so I've got the problem. You don't have a problem. I've got a problem. And it's just for that, that, I want to call out that driveway thing again. I, I get why it works out that way. I just look when you're, when you're dealing with multifamily units like this, next to each other, you got driveway next to driveway, next to driveway, and you've only got eighteen feet for two cars. I know this is previously approved, so I'm not going to put this back on you guys because it was something you guys did, did the right thing. You got it approved. I just want to make a general statement that I don't like that. That, that I think there should be a relook at that and make sure that we provide enough room for, for the parking.
Like an ordinance amendment?
An, an ordinance amendment if need be. Twenty feet, I would think would be a good minimum.
Or an ordinance standard for residential.
Something like, in order to, to get that in there, just, you know, to put everybody in the, you know.
Ten feet wide, you mean?
Ten-foot wide parking spaces to, to match our, to match our standard, to make sure that the ordinance matches whatever standards we're, we're putting out there.
Isn't that like a typical parking spot?
Yeah. Yeah, and if you.
What, ten by twenty, I think?
Ten by twenty is standard. I mean, I, I looked at this. I measured it out in my garage. You can't get two cars next to each other in eighteen feet and get out of anywhere. You just can't. But I, but I get that this was, this was pre-approved.
Well, Johnny, the pick 'em up trucks they build today, you're not going to do this. But the cars they build today, you could put three cars across eighteen feet. They're clown cars.
I've seen what you drive. You couldn't get out in eighteen feet. So, um, that was just a comment, not, again, not, not directed at you guys, but more for the.
Great standard, Johnny.
And, and anybody else that wants to come before us in the future, I'll be looking hard at, at ten-foot wide parking spaces.
He means it. Jason, you've read what our staff has submitted, right? Do you have any issue or any, any contemplation that you can't fulfill what they have advised?
The answer, the short answer to the question is no. Uh, for the items that, that the planner and, and the engineer indicated, the ninety percent brick, we would be, all these items, we would be happy to handle administratively, should the Planning Commission choose that that's appropriate. And we will address all those and let staff review them. All of the ones that I had were ninety percent brick. We will absolutely meet that. The six hundred square feet of recreation area, no problem. The eight-foot wide concrete path along the front, happy to change that. Light fixtures going to dark sky, no problem. And for Mr. Kozak, uh, lining up utilities, we've already reached out to the developer to the south. We have their plans. We're ready to shift all those utilities. That's no problem whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here who wants a comment about this? I think it's twenty-one, isn't it?
This, this application is twenty-one. In the early days, years ago, it was twenty-four.
Three building, uh, phases, ma'am. Uh, as you can see up on the board there, you see three nice little, there's some shrubbery in between two on the one side, on the right. And then the one on the left. It's, uh, three buildings, seven units in each.
These are townhome units.
Yeah, maybe. Let me look. Here's the elevations right here.
There you go. There you go. Thank you, Jason. That helps a lot. Yes.
It's a lot of brick. Happy to do it.
Do they have basements?
Sam, do you know if they have basements? Yes, yes. They'll have basements, yes.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Townhomes usually have basements. I rarely, I don't ever remember seeing an application built on slab.
If there's, if there's no other.
Fifteen years.
If there's no other comments, I'd like to, I'd make a motion.
You're entitled to, Sir Thomas.
I'd say make a motion to approve the site plan request for the Washington Villas of multifamily residential development that consists of a total of three buildings and twenty-one units located at parcel twenty-four dash zero four dash three four dash two hundred dash zero zero three.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
That was contingent upon addressing the planner and engineer's comments.
Yes.
Well, that goes without saying.
Not in a motion.
Christine says it doesn't go without saying.
Yeah, okay. Well, you can do that. Oh, yeah.
And I second that. All right. D three?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Sacco?
Certainly.
Mr. Chaplin?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Thank you all very much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Good luck, Jason. Thanks for, uh, thanks for not abandoning Washington Township. You'll fit right in over there. Okay, next on our agenda, I believe it's Veridian Phase Three. Final condominium review of Phase Three Second Amendment to the Master Deed, forty-nine single-family residential units. And that is parcel twenty-four zero four thirty-six three hundred zero four three. This is on the north side of Twenty-Six Mile Road, east side of Shana Road. Do we have our applicants here?
We do.
And he is?
I'm Brian Slitter with Veridian Development LLC, four twenty-nine South Main.
You look familiar, Brian.
Yes. Uh, if you, as you may recall, we were here, uh, last year trying to get final condo approval for both Phase Two and Three simultaneously. We ran into some comments about, uh, the natural setback, or the wetland buffer setbacks in Phase Three that we had to address. Altered the site plan to address the majority of those, um, issues. And then we approached the ZBA in December for a variance for two of the units to allow, uh, a small cross-section of the buffer zone to exist on the lots, but within the ten yard, I mean, the ten-foot side yards.
How'd that ZBA do?
They, they worked very well with us.
They're pretty good, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah. We were very pleasantly.
You're bragging.
So, uh, we received all of the review comments, um, as, we couldn't be here unless we had final, um, engineering approval from the township. As noted, uh, there are some comments that the engineering group provided, which we have no problem addressing. The, one of the comments from Rich from the DBW was a questioning of the driveway on Lot, um, Unit one forty-seven. He was questioning why it was on the east side. I suggest, I, I believe what he was referring to is that was one of the units that we required, uh, the ZBA to allow the wetland buffer to exist on the lot. And I think he was probably worried that the driveway might encroach. But all of these units are front entry, um, units, so there was no side entry incursion of, of the driveway. So that is not an issue. It worked with, uh, the planning consultant and, and a couple of comments that they had. And one of the things that we were even conversing over the last couple of days is just the final calculation of the tree replacement for the project. There's this, in Phase One, we didn't cut down enough trees to trigger that limit, but in Phase Two and Three, there are more trees that are being cut down. So there's not as many open spaces in Phase Two and Three, so we're going to, we have a plan to provide those replacement trees in the open common areas in Phase One. So we just have to work with staff to just determine that final calculation. And then we're going to notate those tree replacements on the Exhibit B document, landscape plans. So that it will be of public record. It should be clear to everyone what are, what trees are replacement trees and cannot be taken down.
All right.
And then one of the other comments was, uh, the requirement at the entrance on Shana for the double-arm dark sky compliant lighting, which we will easily comply with and work with staff.
Okay. Staff, uh, that includes you too, D three. If you have anything additional to your writings, please, uh, please comment about what Jason has said.
Brian.
Kayla's written a gospel.
Sure.
And, uh, Brian, I, you know, it's, uh, we, she may have something else to add.
Hey, I'm, I'm all ears.
No, I think, if you recall, when this came in for overall preliminary condo, that was prior to, you know, our grand entrance. And I know we, we pushed a lot to accommodate for that entryway on Shana, um, to the best of, you know, what we had before we had an ordinance in place.
Sure. And they agreed, was, was what I recall, because I remember when they came in front of this, this commission and I brought that up.
I don't believe it's a boulevard.
It is now. We came in, not a boulevard. It was suggested and we revised it to a boulevard.
That's good, Brian.
So it is a boulevard.
Boulevard entries.
Yes.
Any brick?
Stone walls.
So do you have like, uh, like we do have a grand, uh, a, a grand entrance ordinance now. Are we doing anything along Shana?
Yes, we, it's, it's a much smaller scale than what's on Twenty-Six Mile because we have a much smaller, um, uh, frontage on Shana. But we've maximized the trees and the, and the, per the ordinance on how much landscaping we need to put across that entrance. And the walls mimic what's on Twenty-Six Mile, just smaller.
Is that something that we, we, we have plans of to show?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone's happy with this? I am. Uh, we, we still have to get a master deed review, uh, Brian. Uh, Christine has not had that.
Sure.
You're, you're aware of that.
Yes, no, of course. Peter, I have a landscape plan. It's small. If you want to see it.
Please. Thank you.
I would prefer small.
Nice. This is off Shana.
Kayla, you made a comment on page three about impervious surface calculations. I just was wondering what the, what you. I read that, didn't quite understand it. I wonder what you were getting at there.
Yeah, so the way the ordinance is written currently, for any condominium project that comes in, uh, we have to look at the impervious surface calculations and lot coverage. It doesn't always make sense though, because condominiums where the sites are going to be individually developed, as in, you know, the owner is not building the sites, that they're not going to have that information yet. So that will be evaluated as each building comes in, as each lot is developed through the building permit process. So we still noted on our review plans, just to be thorough, but, uh, it doesn't apply in this case.
I get it. Thank you.
We check that on every single plot plan that comes through.
Okay.
John, this is a, quite a large piece of land. This is kind of like one of the initial phases, right, Brian?
It's actually the final phase.
It's the final?
Yeah, so we, we're currently building in Phase One that's on Twenty-Six Mile.
Apparently, okay.
Phase Two, um, is going to be starting their development of their, their roads, infrastructure this year. And Phase Three is most likely going to be simultaneous to Phase Two. So they both will look, most likely go in at the same time.
Yeah, we went through this thoroughly because this is Twenty-Six and Shana is quite a busy intersection. And, uh, this is going to be an overall, uh, quite large development, which it is. There already is, uh, development there on the north, uh, west corner of Twenty-Six and Shana. I think that's called, uh, Stonebriar?
Yes.
Stonebriar Development. Um, so, uh, this is kind of like Brian says, this is the last phase. That's forty-nine units. I mean, that's, uh, quite a considerable phase. Kayla, were you all set? Uh, can, can they complete what you're looking for?
Yes, I just wanted to specify because of the change from our review letter. So replacement trees were just a little funky, like he said, because of the phasing. So we did talk to the applicant and they're willing to revise their tree inventory sheet to show for all phases, do the calculation for the site as a whole, and then make sure that the replacement trees that they identified in previous submissions cover, uh, what, what the ordinance requires. So that's the biggest change on the site plan. For the master deed, there were just a, a few issues with lining up the sheet index with what was actually submitted. Nothing that can't be addressed. And I did just want to note for those of you that also sit on the ZBA, uh, they did include the language from our ZBA motion, which was just ensuring that those lots that encompass part of a wetland buffer, that still no structures, um, can be built within that space. So we, we were satisfied with that language in the master deed.
Great.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I took a minute now to review the Second Amendment.
Oh, all right.
Included within the packet. I just missed it because it's a very small measure. Only a minute, three pages, a few pages. I was looking for thirty pages, so I have no objection.
No objection.
Dana, what did we originally approve this? When was that? Was that about four or five years ago? Five more.
Yeah, it.
I, I think it was May of two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand eighteen, okay.
And then COVID happened.
Yes.
Okay. Well, hey, things, uh, don't work out as quickly as we'd like always and, you know. I think we go too fast anyway in this day and age. I don't mind slowdown.
I agree.
All right. Uh, any more we want to add, uh, staff or commissioners? Okay, we can, is there anybody here who wants a comment about, uh, what we had just discussed for Veridian Phase Three?
My question is, when are they going to widen Twenty-Six?
Oh.
Right from down Twenty-Six going east?
You want to take that one?
No.
Young lady, that is a good question for the Macomb County Department of Roads.
Or John.
Or, or John? John's got the answer?
I don't have any answers.
Oh, okay, Dana. You're getting in trouble.
They're paving this question.
Which one?
Oh, I thought you said Shana. Never mind.
I'll, I'll, I'll stick my nose in it just.
Very good.
I'm like, where are they paving?
Presidente.
A project to widen Twenty-Six Mile Road had been included in a previous version of the county's TIP program. As the county has reevaluated corridors of significance, um, I would say that project has been pushed back some amount of time and a determined amount of time. I will tell you that the township, uh, Washington and Shelby Township were both cooperating in, with the county in that project in hopes that it can slowly march east and start to widen out. There are right away constraints there that exist. Shana Road, that Dana was alluding to, the township, we are finalizing that design for paving of that road. There's, that is not currently slotted in any current fiscal year of funding. But the, but Shelby Township is working with the county. They do have an approved plan, I believe, for twenty twenty-six. Don't quote me on that, to pave, to widen, uh, Shana Road up to Twenty-Six Mile Road. From twenty-five to twenty-six, that's the last piece there that has to happen. So there's road capacity that's coming. But yes, obviously Twenty-Six Mile Road has its traffic constraints during very peak times only.
Yes.
I understand.
Just, just for future reference, so you, you know, and I'll just jump in and add a little bit to what Mike said. Township can't build any roads. Well, our part is, we go to a, a company like Giffords and we say, we want to improve a road in this area. And we pay for the engineering. We have them draw out the plans and get it all ready to go. And then we go to the county and go, please, can we have some more road? And the county goes, we'll get back to you. And that's, that's, you know, the extent of what we can do. You know, we're, we're at the mercy of whatever the county is willing to spend in this particular area in any given year. So.
But, but to that point, I think the township has made a commitment and has continued year over year for the past five or six years to make significant investments in the road. Network here. And the county looks on that very favorably because they see that commitment and your projects, you know, get slotted in when they have available dollars on their end. And they are very willing to work with communities that want to invest. So you guys are doing everything.
The community has to match.
There, match isn't even the right word. I mean, it, it depends on the type of project because sometimes you're paying more than the county's paying. Sometimes you're splitting it. It, it just depends. But again, if you, if you come to the table willing to invest, I think it gets looked upon very favorably and you keep gaining projects.
Partnership, bless him, hang out.
Yeah. But again, they make the final call.
Absolutely. Well, they're, they're wrong. The county's own, the county owns the road, so they do make the final call without a doubt.
Right. Wouldn't that be built and the township should slow down with being built until we get the road? Or we just keep on adding?
Well, I know you asked when, which is a good question, but you heard nothing but words. And it sounds more encouraging from what Michael said, that from the start, Macomb County Department of Roads has been involved. And you better believe that's a busy intersection. It took a long time to get a light there, a four-way light. And definitely, that is a highly trafficked area and another forty-nine families is going to add to it. So, uh, Macomb County Department of Roads, from what Mike says, sounds like they're on it. Michael, are they, are you encouraged or are you just?
I, I mean, they're responding to development. I, I would also caution the mentality that just adding lanes is always a solution because it's not. That creates traffic. People will find alternate routes when there's traffic. They will do things. Just, just putting a fourteen-lane road, making Twenty-Six Mile Road into a freeway isn't the solution either. So there's a balancing act.
Yeah, that Twenty-Six Mile Road has almost turned into Hall Road, uh, through the years now. It's quite busy. So that's, this Twenty-Six and Shana isn't, uh, an exemption. It's, it's, it's just as busy there as anywhere else on Twenty-Six. So, yeah, I, I think the county recognizes that, but you could ask any of the, uh, elected officials who deal with the Macomb County Department of Roads from the township, and they will tell you it's, they're there every week, then they're making the case. But there's so many priorities throughout this county, uh, that sometimes they don't get to us. So, you know, look at our roundabout at Twenty, uh, campground and, uh, right before, uh, Twenty-Eight Mile Road. You know how long it took to get a, a roundabout there? Too many years, but we got it. But we kept pressing. We kept pressing. And it wasn't going to happen overnight, but we got a nice roundabout now, thank goodness. But, you know, this is going to be a, a, you know, a work in, in progress as far as getting that road, that intersection especially. And I think Jewel isn't paved. I think going north of Twenty-Six, is it paved? It is paved?
Shana, you mean?
Shana, you mean?
I mean, Shana.
It's not, but.
It's not paved.
But that's what Mike was alluding, that there's a plan in the works.
That's been designed. That's a couple of years down the line, but it is happening.
Well, we wanted to answer the young lady's question and that's the best we can do tonight. Okay.
All right.
Uh, anything else? Any, uh, if not, then we could make a motion for. If not, then we could make a motion for Veridian.
I would submit a motion to approve the site plan request for the Washington Villas multi-family residential... Not Villas, let me move to the next page.
Wow, those guys are happy.
Congratulations, you can build the Villas now. One page off. Motion to approve the final condominium site plan and master deed with exhibits for Veridian Phase Three located at parcel 24-04-36-300-043, which consists of 49 single-family residential units contingent on compliance with engineering and planning comments and requirements.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we can take a roll on that, Dee.
Mr. Chaplin?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Sacco?
Certainly.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Township has been a privilege to work with.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
What's next?
That's an interesting case. It's the villages of Washington next. We got a conceptual planned unit development presentation for mixed-use residential, 108 multifamily units, 44 single-family residential units. This is parcel 2404011008. This is the south, 43 acres of an 82-and-a-half-acre parcel, south of 32 Mile Road, east of M53. Do we have... Oh, we do have somebody here, all right. Mr. Torres is here and ready to roll. This is conceptual, folks, so we're going to sit back and listen.
Yes, so, Michael Torres, 5865, Jackman Court, Washington Township, Michigan. So this project is a start, is a redevelopment of an existing approved 2016 PUD development agreement with the township and Myers. So Myers had purchased the property at the southeast corner of M53 and 32 Mile Road. They came in with a plan. They didn't need the entire acreage, so they split it in half and obtained an agreement that is now almost 10 years old. We all know what happened in the last 10 years in terms of cost. So we purchased the property under an option agreement, and in looking at the property and what we can do with this property, it's industrial, so we actually are proposing a mixed-use product that addresses some multifamily, but multifamily that really is going to fit the need for professional, young families with attached garages, basements. And then we also have duplexes, so we're trying to address our seniors that still need housing to move out of some of these larger homes. And then we also have single-family. The state of Michigan has implemented in the last couple of years, they're trying to address the affordability throughout the whole state. And in doing so, they have proposed to piggyback a new TIP program that allows for developers to develop property and use the incremental tax financing to put product in. It may not be as affordable for the families that want to be in your district. So they use a rule of up to 120% of the AMI, which then is pretty much covered by most of our younger professionals that are graduating. What is good about the project is that it addresses some really big needs for the township. One, the township installed its own sewer, sanitary sewer district, which is in a negative income. There's not enough housing that is attached to that product right now, so it will address that. The second thing that we address is that is the school system. So the school system is losing students, and if you look at the homes that are being built, they're starting at $800,000. Our young professionals can't afford those homes, so they're taking their young families or their starter families to districts that can afford, they can afford these homes. So by providing a more of an attainable product, we are welcoming back our kids, our children that went to college. We also have a road that you guys just talked about, and I know we all like to be hopeful, Mike, but the road doesn't go in for probably 10 years. If they tell you five, it's 10. We know that the shared program, I do a lot of work in Shelby Township, and they had to come out of pocket extra just to get that pavement from 26 up to 26 Mile Road, because they didn't want to pay for the bridge. You know, the county did not want to pay for the bridge, so they came out of pocket for the bridge. And they would not let them do the road unless the bridge was going to be rebuilt. So they had to come out of pocket for the bridge. But either way, we, under the program, the TIP program, we can actually quantify and qualify the road to go in at our cost and be reimbursed over 25 to 30 years through this TIP program. So your brownfield development program is, was, in the past, has been a program that is used to clean up sites or blight. And over the years, they have changed it quite a bit. And now adding a housing program to help put projects in where there's difficulty really allows the township to take advantage of putting these roads and developments in that would not happen for 10 more years. So it does address that as well. I did bring a report to touch base on the school district, and just for example, I'll read some numbers to you. So 2020, the pre-K was 595 enrolled. By 2028, it drops to 387. The kindergarten goes from 332 to 327. The grades 1 through 4, from 1845 to 1250 by 2028. And grades 5 through 8 will drop... Actually, that was an increase from 1765. And the reason why is because the kids are already in the district. They've already been here. The families have already purchased the home before everything went up in the last five years. So we've talked to the school district, they shut down one of their middle schools, and as we all know, if we lose our schools, we lose manufacturing, we lose other product that a lot of these bigger companies, like Stellantis, looking at the property across the street from us, is important. One of the concerns they brought up to the attorneys and to the township is who's going to put the road in? They want township to put the road in, so we handle that. And the other thing was, is what about the housing? Where is our workers going to live? What can they afford? So it really handles both of those concepts or struggles or barriers to allow us to still welcome and be competitive in bringing manufacturing to Washington Township. I want to comment on our density. So the previous density was approved at 211 units. We're down to 152. We're trying to make this project more durable for a young professional family with garages, so we're not going to see cars parked out front in metal covers. We want this to look really good, like a townhouse. We also have, let me see, the road. And we support, like we said, we support the brownfield program. We met with the county. The county supports the program, and it's kind of a hidden program, not a lot of people know about it yet, but it's starting to gain legs. The way it works, too, so there's not an unknown, from the time we submit this program, the state of Michigan is required to approve it within two months, or it's automatically approved. So it's a very fast-track program. They're trying to address the needs across the board, and I think we have a great opportunity to do so. So we're here to answer any questions. Again, this is a, you know, a pre-conceptual drawing, and it'll change a little bit as we engineer and design. But I think it's a great first start to allowing our kids to remain in our township and to support the school system.
Staff, commissioners, you got any questions?
I don't know if you want to let staff go.
Got somebody else going to comment?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Tony Ferlito, joint developer with Mike, 54120, Milano Drive. Yeah, that's me.
Okay, all right, Tony, very good.
We've been working on for the last several years, trying to bring attainable housing to communities. It's so sorely needed. Washington, obviously, is an incredible place to live, it's an incredible township. But one thing that we noticed right away is that, okay, where are the young people going? Where are the elderly going that want to move out of that big house and shrink down a little bit, want to stay within the community? So we're trying to provide what's called attainable housing, which is, it's not cheap, don't get me wrong. This is still a nice product. I don't know about the 90% brick, we're going to have to talk about that, but I'm just kidding. We'll get into that later. But, you know, we're...
If you want his vote, better get into it later.
All right, Peter, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to... No, no, but seriously, we think the location is good for what we want to do, because we're, again, we're off 32 Mile Road, we're not going to affect 26 and Sheiner and where all these bottlenecks are. Now, that doesn't mean someday it won't be a bottleneck, 32 Mile Road is going to continue to grow. But for now, it's pretty, you know, you can move on that road fairly easily. Our biggest challenge with this development is Augustine Road. And for those of you that have reviewed the plan, we've had some preliminary talks with the county, they're going to want a collector road. We already have the easement set in place, it's 86-foot right-of-way for that road. But, you know, collector roads are obviously very, very expensive. Certainly, it's off-site, it's a challenge. And that's where this TIP program comes in to help us pay for that road and actually get the development built. Otherwise, without Augustine, you can't...
You can't access the property.
It's landlocked, right, because the property is behind the 40 acres that Myers has purchased at 32 Frontage. So this is actually behind that property. This is 43 acres.
You know, years ago, when Myers came in front of this commission, years, Dana, wasn't there some type of connection or, you know, with the property behind Myers, which I assume is this?
Yes.
Yeah, there was conceptual, you know, it was just pods that they had shown on that PUD, and that PUD has expired. So at the time, you know, if they choose to move forward, they do have to come back before you, just so that you're aware.
But the good news for us is, is we don't have to wait for the rest of the road. I mean, I would think that eventually Washington is going to want to extend that road from 32 to 31 and connect it eventually, just to help the flow of traffic off of 53 and other roads, for example. But this development could still get kicked off without waiting for somebody else. Obviously, as you know, we have sewer, water, brand-new systems. We have a very large natural feature creek that runs through the center of the development, so we're going to build a giant detention pond to hold the water, slowly drip into the creek. It's not going to affect anybody downstream at all, because the requirements nowadays with Eagle and the county are extraordinary. I mean, literally, it's like dripping water out of a pipe after a large storm, because we have to build these large ponds nowadays, and filter systems, by the way. So we feel very confident that we have the most important three elements, which is sewer, water, storm, outlet, without affecting anybody else around us. And quite frankly, at this point in time, like Mike said, the sanitary and the water just went in. It's brand-new, it's way underutilized, and we need to continue on tapping into that system to not only help pay for it, but just, that's the reason why it's there.
Got it. No, so one of the concerns, you know, this commission's always had is quality development. And, you know, that's why this commission voted on the 90% brick, and especially with the PUDs. So that would probably be one of my concerns. And Dana, is that only on the... Is that the whole house or just the face?
As far as the...
The 90% ordinance?
It's for each building face.
Yeah.
So each face of the building has to get to 90%. It can't even just be 90% of the whole building.
For the multifamily.
Say that again. Okay.
Each side has to meet that requirement.
Right. So some applicants have come in and they've had 90% of the building as a whole, but maybe the front elevation doesn't have that 90%. The back has 100, yeah. To be each side.
If I may?
Sure.
I want to mention one more thing. If you've been watching LARA over the past several years, which is a Michigan construction code, every year, we are constantly getting new code restrictions that keep going up and up and up and up and up. So when you talk about quality product, you can build a $2 million house or a $400,000 house, and I guarantee you, the HVAC systems, the electrical systems, the concrete, everything is exactly the same. You have to meet all those standards. Then you're talking about facades. Okay, we have brick, we have, you know, poured concrete walls or whatever, we have, you know, some of these materials that we use nowadays on the outside of the house are actually the same price or even more expensive than brick, but we're trying to mix up the style, make it look a little bit... I don't want to say user-friendly, that's the wrong word, but make it look a little bit more relaxed or humble. But it's still very expensive. Hardyboard, for example, same price per square foot, so. But the quality of the product, please, this will be very high-quality, because we don't have a choice, it's the standard, that's what we have to do.
Yep. And normally, when we discuss any type of a discount or a TIP program, it's always been associated with low-income homes. That is not the case here. We're talking $450,000 is low income, and a lot of the younger families still can't afford that. So it's really trying to even get them in the door at something that's more affordable to allow for, you know, and then we discount the homes a percentage as well, what they call a gap, that we try to, again, you know, it's a TIP district that is the incremental difference between the taxation of today's property to when the product is already built, using that money over years. So it's not like we get it back in two years, we get it back over 30 years, yeah.
I respect that.
So it's still a struggle to make it work financially, because, you know, you can't just sell it anywhere, you know, they discount it quite a bit if you want to sell those TIPS.
But gentlemen, as a conceptual, we can only have general questions of you tonight. TIP is new to us, and you did a good job explaining it. I don't know if Mike or Kayla could, if they're experienced with TIP, could add anything to that concept.
I think to prepare for future meetings on this, we'll provide a presentation of some sort that goes over that program and how to use it.
Not simple, is it?
Yeah, there's a lot to it.
Well, there have been some discussions on this, and I appreciate you guys, you know, putting the information out there for us. You know, looking at this again, I think from previous comments, you talked about, you know, the affordable housing side being 25% of the available units. Are you still on that number?
Yeah, and until we run all the numbers and we understand what we get approved for, it might flow back and forth a little bit, but, you know, everything has to work within the numbers for us to qualify.
Yeah, and I, you know, I remember during those discussions, there was, you know, some discussion about the schools, and I know Treasurer Nicely was in there, and he pushed back on some of your numbers a little bit. And I had, you know, looked at this, and looking at 60-foot lots, I don't even know if we have a zoning that covers the 60-foot frontage, but...
60-foot, yeah?
Yeah, 60-foot, for the single families, so...
John, keep in mind, forgive me for interrupting, but keep in mind, this would be under a PUD.
I understand.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I always compare it to, you know, what our standards are, and then when we're stepping away from that into a PUD, we're looking for, you know, why.
Got it.
So I'm, you know, I'm basing everything, I base everything off the zoning that we have, and then...
I'm happy to answer that question, too, if you want to know.
So just, I mean, we're just in conceptual. I, you know, I've looked at the tax increment financing stuff, and I'm trying to find out, you know, how it works out for the township, you know, and you and everybody here. It's a bit of a stretch, yet in my head, as far as, you know, what's the upside for the township here? And I think I stated in one of the previous meetings that, you know, if we were looking at doing affordable housing and you were looking at affordable housing development as a whole, I would be much more amenable to looking at stepping away from some of our, you know, dimensional standards. But if we're going to be doing a 25% plus or minus, you know, then, you know, maybe consider dimensional standards on some of those, but certainly not all of them. That's just where my head is at right now. The other question that was brought up that I had, that I want to put out there for the rest of the board and everybody here is assuming, I think the last time we met, you talked about construction costs on these houses being about half a million dollars. That's what it's going to cost to put up one of these single families. And let's say you sell it for 400, that you're giving that 100 back to make it affordable. You know, and this one, I'll direct at you, because I don't think we've got a good answer for it. Some guy comes in, and he buys that house at $400,000, lives there six months, turns around and wants to sell it at market price. around and wants to sell it at market price.
That I can't answer.
That I can't answer.
Yeah, John, I talked to our consultant, they have another development, and what they've done is they have an agreement with the township that someone that purchased that home, they require them to remain in that home for five years, or they prorate the home as a discount and as a give-back. So you can legally do that as part of our agreement.
Can we do that?
Yes.
That's something I'll have to look into. It's not a program I'm familiar with, but we'll do some looking into it.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that, what we do with people coming in and out of the affordable, and just to make, I mean, obviously, if that weren't there, I would go buy all of them and then turn them around next week and tell them all for it and make 100 grand on each one.
Absolutely.
Wow, well-cooper partners.
Yeah, I mean, that's, but it's a concern. You see, we have to look at what's happening with, you know, to make sure they stay affordable housing, if they're gonna be that.
Yeah, and actually, the program is reviewed and audited by the state every single year because they want to see what your progress is, and the TIF only applies at the same percentage as your progress. In other words, it's not like they throw a bunch of money at you and you build it.
Yeah, they reassess it every year.
They reassess it every year, and it's all done based on progress. You get audited every single year, so the state actually has a lot of control.
Yeah.
And the county.
Yeah, and John, to add like the smaller lot, for example, so our development cost is by the foot. So, you know, we could put a larger lot, it defeats the purpose of trying to get the numbers down because lumber is gonna cost us the same whether I build a bigger house or smaller home, but by the volume. But really, it's the road frontage, the concrete, the sewer, you know, we're spending $1,100 a lineal foot right now, per each side of the road. So when you look at that, and then you look at St. Augustine Road, nobody, nobody I know in the last 10 years paid for a county road through a development. We'll be the first.
What square footage are you looking at for the single families, do you know?
Anywhere between 2,000 and 2,200 square foot.
On the duplex?
No, no, a single family.
A single family.
Yeah, the duplexes would be more like 15, 16.
Yeah, 1,600 square foot.
Total per unit?
Per unit.
Okay, so 3,000.
And the townhomes would be 1,650 on the small end to 1,800.
The single family does have a 1,500 square foot option, is that not accurate?
Well, you know, again.
A ranch, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. If I'm referring to 2,000, the two-story, we think most of the product will be two-story because we're looking at young families.
You know, our cost in construction went from, on a ranch, we would pay about $85 a foot 12 years ago, 10 years ago, to right now, we're at about $165 a foot for a ranch. It drops about $15 for a colonial two-story. And then we spend an extra $20 a square foot, when you look at commissions, taxes, carrying costs, interest, so we're at 185 a foot. It's up there.
Well, the reality is, and if you look at all the studies around the country, construction costs for residential product, and actually commercial as well, has gone up 40% since 2019. Now, every different real estate category ranges 37, 38, 42, and every different discipline ranges, some went up 100%, some only went up 10%. But as a whole, as an average, construction costs have gone up 40% from 2019 to today, actually, before the tariffs, who knows what's gonna happen now, backed that up for six months. And that's just a reality. And this is what the world that we live in and try to figure things out every day. So it's very important that we try to figure out how to keep the numbers down. That's why the state implemented these new TIF programs, to try to make sure, try to keep someone reasonable. I mean, I couldn't even imagine, when I was 20 years old and I first got married, a starter home being.
You know, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, you know, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, many people moved to quite a bit, and the average lots. So the ones that show one door, the ones that show one door are double-deep.
All three phases.
All three phases are two-car, the townhomes, the units in the center, what we call tandem garages, so it's where one-car.
Okay. And you didn't have Spotify?
Appreciate it.
They sent this to Ellie with Dana, then you can take all the data.
Thank you.
Explaining about that day, is, and been with her, and just trying to clean that up and, you know.
The development, or, no, don't waste your time. Because you know how much it costs to take it from this.
31 mile.
Okay.
Put maybe a stipulation there saying you don't want a road all the way.
As a comment?
Enjoy.
Yeah, yeah.
I like it.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I have a quick question for Kayla. Oh, all right, Kayla's got the answer. So regarding the. Oh, oh, okay. Jeez. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, okay. Jeez. Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought that was bad.
You know what?
Public hearing, so.
This is a public hearing, Pete.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to it.
Owner of feedback. Tonight, after the public hearing, and if the planning commission, you know, feels that all comments have addressed, what I'd be looking for is a motion recommending approval. But I do, and then the final change that I'm requesting is not based on legal, but is seen as not based on legal, but is actually based on wanted to allow channel letter signs in the village district. The village design guidelines had recommended a district that prohibited.
Beautiful.
You can make the motion, Pete.
Commercial and general.
No, no.
I won't, you know, okay, good.
It's very general, it could apply to all.
The board of trustees approving.
You're making a recommendation.
Just a recommendation.
Recommendation.
And after a public hearing.
Oh, they have a.
You have a.
Right now, for the.
If you have to read the sign to tell whether it complies, it doesn't.
That's the current time, and the.
Temporary.
No, so the limited duration.
Is quantity one of them?
Time.
Place.
Place and manner.
It's exempt, yeah, so no time limit on that.
No.
No.
Any other comments?
I'm good.
All right, then I make motion to clear.
One there. Decision on planned unit developments, so that was, that's the only one that's that far along in that process.
Yeah, and I think supposedly grace. My husband.
We've motioned to.
Has wanted to work on, that we've just kind of incorporated into this bundle as a little bit of a Band-Aid while we go, we're later this year and look at those amendments. However, we wanted to do this, you know, making it clear so that it's consistent because there are a lot of pages there that just modify potential collisions with, you know, bikers entering and being on the trail, so just wanted to remove that language, consistent with the way that we've been processed. If I apologize, is already really limited, if I apologize, is already really limited. There are very few sites that are, there are very few sites that are zoned, general, commercial, so this was putting a, that one, before I move forward.
No, that's, that's pretty good, Kayla. Okay, but that's a lot of stuff in red.
It is a lot. About screening, we mapped in loading zones.
Do you have that?
We have a version of that, yeah.
Exotic animals show up, yeah.
Yeah, we had like 20 pages of definitions that, that we were tears laughing over.
You can't have a hippo.
Yes.
No, you cannot, can you believe it?
Did you write that, Chris?
The hot-bellied pig.
Pablo Escobar.
All right, keep us on track here. Subsection G, no business activity of any kind from a storage unit, so someone can't have their woodworking shop in that storage unit.
Ah, good.
And then no outdoor storage, storage containers or other storage outside of the self-service storage. Storage, storage containers or other storage outside of the self-service storage units themselves may be allowed on the site. So that's just to prevent, you know, anything else that may pile up.
So you can't have an outdoor storage component as a part of a storage facility?
It would be, if it's its own use, that's allowed within that. Like we would combine any uses.
Okay, but I can't take my stuff that's inside of the unit and walk over and put it in a pile and.
And store it outside, yeah.
Got it.
Yep. Okay. The last provision here.
Yes, somebody's got a question.
Yes.
Just to be pedantic, no business activity in any kind of a storage unit. Business activity.
Mechanics.
I mean, are we talking about, you know, casual sales, one-to-one transactions? Let's say I've got a car stored at a unit or a table, dining room set, and I want somebody to come and buy my dining room's table, it's in my storage unit, come on over and they give me 50 bucks for my old dining room table. Is that considered a business activity of any kind, or are we?
No.
Okay.
We're talking mechanics, we're talking, right?
Right.
You can't operate your business.
I generally get it, but I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're not slicing the bread too thin here.
Yeah, like you're opening it up like a shop, like people are coming there on a retail basis.
Just so we're clear.
Or doing work within it.
John's joke, it's the name of his.
Well, that's it, I mean, there's a.
Come on down to John's.
There's a lot of people that buy and sell stuff and do that. So it's some.
If it's occasional, that's one thing.
Yeah.
If you're doing it every Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and you're opening it up and having like a garage outside or antique shop, that's a whole different ballgame.
Well, now I'm glad I asked.
But these are things that will happen, and we had to prosecute.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it's, you know, everybody's looking for the loophole.
Yeah.
Robert?
Hello.
So I have storage, and I notice that by going to out, electricians and other plumbers, they use them to store their materials as opposed to having more costly.
You bet.
Retail space or whatever.
Yeah.
And I want to make sure it doesn't preclude that. I'm not either, but I thought brilliant, these guys can apply circuit breakers and pipe conduits and they store them there and haul it out when they go to a job.
Yeah.
Right, because that's, the business activity is not occurring in the storage unit, it's just storage. We're talking about business activity that occurs in a unit, you know, a repair guy that's using, opens the door and prepares the car inside.
Yeah.
I keep going back to that because I've had to prosecute two of them for doing exactly the.
Washington Township.
No, not Washington Township, no, no.
Okay, good, Chris.
All right, just one more, oh, no, yes, one more section here. Zoning Board of Appeals approval. There was some language here related to expiration of variances granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. We are recommending that you remove that language, and Chris, if you want to speak to that anymore, you're welcome to. But really, variances are intended to run with the land, which means they have no expiration date, and so this language, you know, we're not sure if challenged, if it would hold up. So we just want to remove it and clarify for everybody, including the Zoning Board of Appeals, that any variance that they grant, it's permanent, there's no way for us to go back and enforce an expiration.
Okay, do we need to put any language in there at all? And we've wiped the whole section out. Do we have to state anything affirmatively, Chris?
Well, not if you don't want to have any expiration date, I don't know.
Okay.
So, so there's, but there's no way to have an expiration date on it? I love the way, I love that head shake. I did it again, didn't I?
Well, you know, I don't.
I don't have a problem with the expiration dates because you're giving them a year to do something. If they don't do it, then they got, either come back and try and get another one.
On a variance?
Yeah, but we've never had a challenge. But it's in there and it's a fair condition because a lot of it can happen in a year. If you want to extend it, make it two years, conditions can change, just like with the site plan approval, same idea.
Okay, so.
It's up to you guys.
Yeah.
Completely up to you guys.
Well, this is another one of those, Kayla, Chris thinks I like these.
It's completely, no, it's completely up to you. It's completely up to you guys. And I'm thinking if it's coming more from staff, there's probably no real, if there's no real need for an expiration date, then don't put it in there.
Okay, does that?
I like the expiration.
Does, you like the expiration, Peter? Yeah, so do I. I'm worried about denying somebody an opportunity if we don't have something that this allowed.
You mean denying them an opportunity?
Well, for the expiration date issue. You say you don't care if there's expiration date.
Well, I think, I think it's defendable, but you wouldn't be denying them an opportunity by taking away the expiration date.
But if they're asking for an expiration date?
No, what this means is, I get, if I get a variance to blow my deck five feet into a setback.
Yeah.
And I don't come in and apply for a permit for that deck within a year, that variance is not expired, and I gotta go back and start over again.
I think so. People have to, or, you know.
So that, that's the end of that. We don't have to deal with expiration requests at the zoning board.
It's up to you guys to decide.
So if we remove it, the variance is just good for whenever, wherever, as long as, as long as the house stands there.
Oh, it's good forever, runs with the land?
Yep.
Or, or we enforce a timeframe?
Well, you know, that might be something that that original owner of that property might say, yeah, I'm gonna do it, and then they sell the property, and they got a new owner in there, and they're stuck, the new people.
Well, no, they don't have to use a variance.
Or they could come and reapply.
They don't have to use a variance.
The new people don't have to use a variance.
No, they don't have to.
So it's not running with the land.
It does run with the land, but a variance gives them the option to violate the going ordinance.
Yes.
They don't, not a requirement to do it.
Okay. Oh, that's a difference.
Right, it's not a requirement that they do it, they can let the variance sit there and not do it.
Okay.
See, the benefits of both ways.
They don't want to use it.
A man over here, Dan.
I'll use as an example, I'll go through and say, yep, I'm gonna approve, and I know there's a minimum 80% brick facing.
90.
90, excuse me. And you give them a variance to allow 70, and they never do it, they sell the land, the next people in, you guys want it back to 90. So having the limit to, yes, I give you a variance, but if you don't do it, the next owner, we want 90, so I'm in favor of putting limits on it. Nothing stops you from extending it if you choose to, but putting a limit on it allows you to bring current in the future, so they've expired, any of the then-current guidelines in the code, like amount of brick or.
Yeah, yeah.
Setback or variances, if they haven't put it in, it isn't for.
Yeah, Bill.
Wouldn't it come out there as some sort of grandfather law?
Not exactly, grandfather's a controversial issue.
That's non-conformal use.
We would grant a variance in anticipation of some action by the person requesting. You know, that would be, you know, if somebody wants to do something and they need to give a variance, we're expecting that they will perform that particular task.
Right.
So, you know, is there.
Maybe you want to give them more time, maybe you want to give more time than a year.
You know, that's.
Or if the expiration date is not important to you, then get rid of it. There's no need to have language in the ordinance that you don't need.
But I'm thinking if something's been hanging out there, let's say somebody gets a variance and they've been sitting on it for 10 years and conditions change.
Exactly.
So now they've got a permanent variance, and no matter what the conditions change to in the area, they can still execute their variance and do what they wanted to do, even if it would be, you know, contrary to public interest.
Yeah.
So.
She's got a butter.
I'm kind of leaning at this point towards some sort of timeframe.
So, just leaving it in, leaving it as.
Yeah, I think maybe a, Kayla, you know, how do you see this? You know, I know you, you said pull this out, but what, I want your thoughts.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess my opinion is that variances are intended to grant permanent relief. That's, you know, that's the typical use of variances. And I think the challenge with having these time limit is that people start to see variances as just waivers from the development standards for specific, you know, specific development, rather than, you know, a, a relief from the zoning ordinance for that site, running with the land, because it doesn't matter if ownership changes, you know, granted, you could have that expiration with a year, but you, no matter whether the project changes scope, whether it changes owners, that variance still exists for whatever time period you decide. And so, I just, you know, I think having this language sometimes confuses what the intent of the variance is and, and actually the power that it gives, in, in some case.
Could, could we word it more briefly to allow any extension? I mean, this is lengthy, it's wordy. Can we make it much smaller in words, allowing any kind of extension? I mean, I, Chris, do you think you could legally put something in there that could be about half the size of this?
Or I could double it?
Double confuse it.
You get paid by the word.
Well, it does have an extension. It does have, I mean, the language itself is, is everything that you would need if you want to just leave it as it currently is.
Uh-huh.
So.
Maybe it's something you want to think about.
I thi, I think it is, but let, you know, let me ask the, the question now that you brought into my head. What are we calling the difference between a waiver and?
A variance.
And a variance?
Well, you don't have waivers in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, because I know you use that language. I just wanted to, you know.
Right, waivers for people.
People are thinking of it that way. They're just going to the ZB, thinking, "Oh, I can get this waived, I can get this waived." A variance is designed to be relief from a certain provision of your ordinance. It's supposed to be very difficult to get.
Yeah.
People shouldn't just be saying, "Oh, I don't want to do this." You gotta explain and be able to demonstrate.
Justify what they.
Right, yeah. Why you cannot use your property as zone.
Yeah.
What is wrong with the ordinance?
And typically, I, I think the other thing that worries me about this language, and again, I'm not an attorney, like, I'm not giving you legal advice, but the other issue here is those criteria for the variance, as Chris specified, are so specific that some of those things really should not be changing over time. Like, these are specific site conditions and hardships that are, you know.
So, you're saying keep it. So, then there is no time limit. So, then it does go on. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I recommended with, with removing.
I could see that, too.
Right.
It would be a lot easier if one of you weren't making good points, but you're both.
I don't know.
It's fun. It makes it hard for you guys. And we, we can table this.
It's a true decision for you guys to think about, which way you want to go.
Yeah, I think I would like to have some further discussion to dig into this, because I'm almost, you know, almost, you want to get away from the idea in my head that's starting to build, is like, we're almost going to get into categories of variance. You know, what's a major and minor variance?
No.
And it, you know, it, that's where my head starts swimming. It's like, we're going to allow this one to continue with the land forever, but we're going to put a timeframe on this one, and then you get into all sorts of.
But then I think about.
Variants are still a variance, period.
Right.
They're all gonna have the right to get an extension, or none of it?
Then I think about someone that buys a home, wants to put a deck on, you know, finds out that they're going into the right-of-way or the easement or whatever, and then they get a variance, you know, and then they sell the house. Then why shouldn't that go to the, the property? Right, that, that kind of makes sense to me.
Because like Ken said, the reasons you get a variance, those conditions really shouldn't change. They shouldn't.
And I, I like what you said about it being specific. So, I can see both ways.
Yeah.
Well, I think I'm up to here now with this.
Yeah, so, but.
So, Chris, if you could.
If I may, if you, if you were to make a motion and just to hold a public hearing and just exclude without seven point nine point F zoning board of appeals approval, so you, we can table that for additional discussion.
Yeah, seven of us.
Want me to make the motion?
That would be fantastic.
I thought I heard.
Okay. Yep. That was a motion I was gonna make. Thank you, Dana.
Well, that's a good one, Bob. Be better to have everybody.
Oh, yeah, we really want seven of the planning commissions on that. And plus, it's a referral to the, to the.
Board anyways.
Right, and you need to have it thoroughly.
Yeah.
Understood and comprehended in your mind, and be comfortable with it before you can refer to them, because they're gonna be asking the same questions.
Yeah, they are.
You need to be comfortable with what you're doing before you give it to them.
And Seibert may not be as amenable as Christine.
Or he may be a whole lot more so.
Yeah.
So, that motion was by Pete, supported by.
Second.
And that was for a public hearing at the June twelfth planning commission meeting?
Yes. With the exclusion of seven point nine F zoning board of appeals approval, further consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Sacco?
Certainly.
Mr. Chaplin?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Okay, we are moving that item to a public hearing on June the twelfth. And our next matter on the agenda, we probably got some kind of review from Project Update or. Yeah, right. Michael, are you next on this? I'm racing.
That would be correct.
I'm racing.
I'm gonna defer to my people next to me here, who seem like we forgot something.
No, with the ordinance tax amendments, I added the appendix B, which was after.
Yeah, it's, it's in their packet?
Yeah.
So, we just need to do, yeah, okay. Sorry, I have these two different items in my head.
That's okay.
Um, okay, so you have, you have.
Right after the ordinance amendment that we just approved for.
For the design standards?
Yep. So, this is an abridged version of your previous design standards. It just, it's all the supplemental information that we said we didn't want to include within the standards of the zoning ordinance, but we didn't want to lose. So, I haven't changed the PDF. We just took out the sections that went to the ordinance and then put a revised date on it as well. And we are asking the planning commission to approve placing that as appendix B within the zoning ordinance. We've labeled it as such and referenced it as well in the V one amendments.
Motion to approve this is appendix B of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
The design standards for Washington Township.
And that's commercial or residential?
V one, village district.
V one, village district, okay.
So, it should look familiar. It's just took out the stuff that contradicts what you put in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, um, so, Ms., Mr. Chaplin?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Sacco?
Oh.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good job. All right, now do we move on to Project Update? Michael?
Sure.
President?
Quite brief. It's been a quiet month. We did have a pre-construction meeting for the Leos Coney Island site at this, up at the Angelicus place, what do we call it now? Sorry, Vista Springs.
Yes.
On the east side of Thirty Mile Road, that open parcel there, just south of North Star Dentistry.
Does it look like Leo's is coming?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's happening.
That's just south of Thirty Mile, or north of Thirty Mile Road?
Yep.
Okay, they came in front with the proposal.
Yep. It has no brick. It's zero percent brick.
And they sell chicken.
You're just being mean now. In large signs.
No, you guys did give them comments on the facade, and they made adjustments, and it's gonna be a very nice building. There's some other multi-tenant retail in there as well, but Leo's is the anchor of that.
Okay, beautiful. Excellent.
Um, and just a whole lot of plans going through engineering reviews right now that we talked about last time, Emerald Creek. I spoke earlier about Clifton Farms and Vernon Grove there at Twenty Seven and Jewel. Mr. Torres was here earlier. His building is still under construction as well, just, just south of that site that we just spoke about, actually, literally south of Leo's.
Yeah, that medical center.
Medical center still.
Michael?
Still going ahead and moving forward and looking good.
When do they think they'll complete that?
I wish he was still here to answer that question. I would assume this year, this calendar.
Oh, they're gunning for this year?
I would think so, based on the fact that the building's almost wholly enclosed and utilities are in.
That's the one at the back though.
It's making progress.
Yeah, I don't, the front building is a second phase that I believe is happening later.
Okay.
Um, and yeah, that's good. Like I said, pretty quiet.
So, I don't have to, Mike? Do you want to talk about the forced main repair?
The township board approved a condition assessment of the township's sanitary forced main that you may remember earlier this, earlier in the winter, we had a rupture of that sewer and spilled multiple thousands of gallons of sanitary sewage into the creek. So, that'll be happening in the next couple of weeks. We'll get a good idea of what the inside of that pipe looks like and make any repairs necessary.
An ancient pipe, right?
Nah, not that old, pretty.
Isn't that old?
Forty-five years, as old as me. I would not call that ancient.
Ancient.
No, me neither.
Spry and.
Me neither.
Never looked better, but we'll find out if that's true.
Leftover from the seventies, wow.
Yeah. It's like our air traffic control system, left over from the fifties. Is that it, Michael? All right.
All right.
Um, John?
The board had approved, as he said, the forced main condition assessment. We also had Total Safe Storage come back for their parking variance and the paving variance. After much discussion, our attorney is going to meet with their attorney and discuss some items relative to ensuring the completion of the project and what happens with the, the phasing of the, of the completion. The idea is that simply we don't want somebody to park a bunch of vehicles there and then never build the buildings. You know, and, and we don't have any good recourse at this point if that were to happen. So, our attorney is going to meet with them, and then we'll get some township staff involved.
Where is this at, John?
This is Total Safe Storage, the old driving range.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
They're working on the pavement because of the methane gas.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we want to make, we want to make sure that we've got some surety that they're going to continue through and after the, the three-to-five-year compression of the soil, that they're actually going to build those, those industrial units up front.
Or if they don't, the township has some way to go out there and start moving the RVs.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, what's it gonna be, crushed stone?
That's what they're asking for. I think people would be amenable to it if we can agree to, you know, some of these terms. You know, the board seems to be leaning that way, so it should. If, if the, if the attorneys can get together and hammer out a deal, we should be able to.
Berm, what, are we gonna have a ten-foot berm?
Something like that. I forget what it was.
It's five, it's five feet.
Five feet, that's substantial, though.
I'd like. It's landscaped, yeah.
So, um, let's see. We approved the continuation for Morestar Transportation and Parks and Rec board members. The current board members have all been re-upped for another term.
Okay.
So, they're doing a great job. We are buying some new computers for the township for, in the, it's about fifty thousand dollars.
Desktops, laptops?
Yes.
Both?
Both. We need, we need some new equipment. We've got it aging, so that was request for the fiscal year, and there will be staged buying new equipment for the people that need it most desperately.